Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges, absent. Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Rollers Burgen?
Here.
Mr. Mayor?
Here. Before we begin the formal proceedings of tonight's meeting, I'd like to note that Rosh Hashanah begins on sundown this Friday night. And on behalf of the City Council, we wish our Jewish citizens a happy and healthy New Year. This is brought to you by, um, Bill Feingold. So I thought that although that was on my calendar too, Bill, I thought that I would acknowledge that, so, uh, Happy New Year. I will turn now to our City Attorney for a closed session report, please.
Yes, Counsel? The Council needs to meet in closed session. On the closed session agenda for the agency, real property negotiations with Jerry Johnson, John Bigley, and Mark Gabay. On each of those three matters, we gave a status report. No action was taken for the city. Real private negotiations with Desert Water Agency, the Walter Family Partnership, we gave status reports on those two matters, no action was taken. Two litigation matters, Center for Biological Diversity, Sierra Club versus the city, and we gave a status report on that matter, no action was taken. Palm Springs Modern Committee versus City of Palm Springs, we reported on that matter. The, uh, the application of the Palm Springs Modern Committee for a temporary restraining order was denied, and so that project has proceeded. But no action was taken by the Council in closed session. Exposure litigation, we discussed one matter, initiation litigation, we discussed matter, no action was taken in either case.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Ashar. I will turn to public comments. Anyone wishing to address matters within the jurisdiction of the entities, please come forward at this time. We have three minutes on the clock. Anyone wishing to address the Council? No? No one? Very good, we'll close public comments. Turn to Council comments, questions or report. Counsel, any reports from last week where you've been? Um, I'd like to bring to the Council's attention a number of things that happened last week. Friday night was the CVA, the Convention and Visitors Authority's start of the season mixer out at the Hyatt Grand Champion, very well attended valleywide. The buzz there was ASAE and all the great business for the entire valley. And on Friday night, same time, at Palm Springs High School was the Kevin Brill Memorial Football Game, which, if you remember that, ongoing annual event, very well attended, saw Mike today. Apparently a severe victory for us, forty-seven to nothing, so I think we did very well on the opener. Saturday, I got the call from SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments. They started formal discussions in bringing together the eleven tribal concerns within the SCAG region. They were here at the behest of Chairman Milanovich, and the intent was to engage the tribal entities in dealing with regional transportation, air quality, and other major concern issues, and I was afforded the opportunity to welcome them. It was very well attended, I did not stay for the conference, but it is encouraging to see that there is active discussion and dialogue between the governing bodies that affect all of the area of SCAG. SCAG is the largest MPO in the nation, it's got over a hundred and eighty-eight cities, and it involves five counties, so it's a very large organization. Sunday, there was an Eagle Scout of Honor Ceremony for Michael Lukey, and rarely do you see young men at this age consider following the path all the way, so we had a nice celebration to honor someone who went all the way to Eagle Scout, and it's always a nice opportunity to be there. Tomorrow night, I should say, yesterday, there was a meeting, the Senior Inspirational Awards, which happen on an annual basis, is attempting to broaden its encompassing scope. We honor citizens over seventy years of age in each of our communities. This year, the date has not been set, but they are trying to see if in fact each city would make a sponsorship contribution of around twenty-five-hundred dollars, so they're going to be bringing to us in the future, I won't dictate when or how soon, but a twenty-five-hundred-dollar request affording us a couple of tables, one for the honoree and their family, and one for the Council and staff to attend, and it also offsets some of the cost of the actual service and luncheon itself, so I give you the heads up, they're gonna try to formalize that and bring that forward. And then yesterday, we installed the new Board of Directors for the Mizel Senior Center, very nice luncheon, very well attended, big crowd, and again, it was very nice to see that we have our leaders still working very diligently to assist in senior centers. Uh, now, tomorrow, um, we celebrate forty-year anniversary of Palm Springs Weekend the Movie. Connie Stevens starred in the movie, she will be with us, there is a special showing at the Riviera. Tickets are limited, and should you call, if you wish, the Riviera for tickets, give them a call and see if you can get in. There will be a number of receptions, a private reception, and Council's invited as part of those private guests to the reception, and one open to the general public, if you get a chance to go see it. And I did release a number of my memorabilia from the Palm Springs Weekend, posters and photos and so on and so forth, if you want to come by and see a significant piece of what made Palm Springs, if you will, internationally recognized in nineteen sixty-three, it was indeed Palm Springs Weekend. Great movie, kinda hokey by today's standards, but a great movie from days gone by. And then this weekend is of course Rocktoberfest, so if you have any interest in joining us downtown, that'll be happening, starting with the kickoff at the Palm Springs Weekend Movie on Thursday, and then carrying forward for the entire weekend. It's open, it is free, and it's available to anyone in downtown Palm Springs. Uh, we do have a conference in town here on Saturday, uh, these are individuals who are involved in travel planners for timeshares, and there'll be a massive conference here in Riviera, so if you get a chance to see these people welcome to Palm Springs, it brings obviously business to us. Okay? Any other comments or questions the Council wants to add? Very good. We'll go past that and go to our City Manager, Mr. Reddy, you've been out of town at ICMA, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor, members of Council, thank you. I do want to just note two things from last meeting, there were two requests. Councilmember Oden had requested from Downtown Development a five-year strategic plan. Mr. Ogburn is in the process of compiling the steps to get there, we're gonna talk about it with Main Street, and we need to do some due diligence works to come back with a good, meaningful, comprehensive plan, and we'd like to agendize that to a study session as soon as possible. And second of all, Councilmember Mills, you had asked for us to look at the possibility of developing neighborhood standards in terms of streets and of some of the other issues. That committee has been set up, we're doing our staff work, and we hope to come back to you within the next thirty days with some recommendations. Okay? Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Reddy. Let's now turn to our City Council's study session topics, first one is signage on taxicabs. Mr. Reddy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of Council, the issue before us here is one of, it's informational, and to see if Council would want to give us some direction, there'd been a request from the taxicab community, if you will, to address the issue of their signage on taxicabs and advertising. We currently have specific rules in place, they're requesting Council to consider some changes. For tonight's format, Mr. Evans, Planning Director, is going to lay out the current rule as it is today, the ordinances, and then we're gonna have a presentation from members of the taxicab organizations, in essence, to give Council their views and inform you of what they would like those ordinances to be changed. So with that, we'll begin with Mr. Evans, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. Uh, the city currently regulates signs on taxicabs, commercial display of matter, with certain exceptions, those exceptions are political campaign signs, identification of the business that owns the vehicle, incidental display of non-commercial material, transportation of signs within the city, and vehicles on construction sites. So essentially, the type of signage that the taxi association would like is prohibited under the current ordinance. In addition to the ordinance affecting taxicabs, it also has been used to keep rolling billboards out of town, basically billboards mounted on trucks and trailers that run through town, and we've had multiple rolling billboards show up in town for special events at various locations in town. The Planning Commission did look at this in a workshop a while back, um, they did receive a presentation from the Taxi Association. The Planning Commission had a debate and discussion, but at the end of that discussion, there were not sufficient members of the Commission that asked staff to work on this as a zoning text amendment, and just as how we work with the City Council, if the majority of the Commission says, Doug, don't work on it, I don't work on it, when it comes to changing laws, and we reported that to Council and informed the Taxi Association to contact the City Council, but the Commission didn't seem to be interested. Uh, there were some different interpretations of that meeting, but essentially, I counted my requisite number of Commissioners to give me direction, and they weren't there, they didn't support it, and some Commissioners were very opinionated about not wanting to change the ordinance. That is a very quick overview of the ordinance, I could certainly answer specific questions if you want, I think the question really is a pretty simple one, that was asked of the Planning Commission, does the City Council want the city staff to look at amending the existing ordinance to allow taxicab signage? If you do, and you have ideas of what you would like in the ordinance, let us know, otherwise we'll start working with the Association on an ordinance if the Council gives us that direction. Sergio Santo, the President of CVTOA, is the first speaker from the Association, so I'd like to bring Sergio up at this time.
I have a couple of handouts for you Councilmembers. First of all, I'd like to thank you for having us here tonight.
Is that green light on, Dave?
Yes, it is. I'll bring it a little closer, how's that? This, uh, the Coachella Valley Taxi Owners Association started working on this issue back in March of this year, and basically, we realized that the city has a lot of concerns on the taxi, advertising on taxi cabs, but first of all, I think it's necessary to go into a little bit of what's transpired here in the last five months. We've had another company approach us, uh, they being interested in advertising on taxis too. Well, our association had a dilemma. We are incorporated by the State of California. We have bylaws. And I'll go ahead and pass these bylaws around. And one of the, on page two, or page three of our bylaws, the CVTOA has the authority to negotiate income-producing businesses for the Association, such as advertising on taxi revenue, and in such cases shall be the negotiating agent for all parties concerned. But it also says that no, that any member of our Association has the right to not participate in our Association's programs. So basically, we agreed for another company to come in and, uh, ask taxi owners if they were interested in participating in their advertising program, and they did get a response. Basically, we set up our own program of checks and balances, because we knew the City of Palm Springs was going to want restrictions on who's advertising. And originally, when we came to the City Council, we produced this nice little information package, which was given to everyone on the Council, I don't know if you still have it, you know, this is the only copy I have, this is from, uh, June fourth of this year. But I'd like to point out something to you, and the reason I'm going into all of this is the CVTOA has set up its own program of advertising, and all we're doing is we're guaranteeing the City of Palm Springs that a license, or a organization that is in place, that is registered with the State of California, that represents two-thirds of the taxi owners in the Coachella Valley, uh, is here tonight telling you that we've set up a program that we're willing to adhere to. And one of these issues is, who can advertise with the CVTOA? And we've always, we have already made this publicly known, that we would not take advertising from any source considered risque, or tobacco industry, alcohol industry, gentlemen's clubs, dating service, or anything that would offend any segment of our population here in the valley. We have set up a program here, and you've got a copy of it, it's called Coachella Valley Taxi Owners Association Weekly Advertising Performance Sheet. You'll see in the top right-hand corner that there's a fax to, this document can be faxed to any government agency on a weekly basis to let them know who's advertising on cabs, what cab, what company, and to the approval of any city, if any city in the valley would have a problem with the advertiser, they could call, they wouldn't have to call six companies, they would have to make one call to the CVTOA, and it would be taken care of, because the CVTOA is, would be regulating this for its members on its program. Now, I'm not speaking for any other company, another, there's another company that's, has some influential backers here in the valley, and we've told them, fine, if our members want to advertise with you, that's great, but they're gonna have to come to the City Council, and they're gonna have to get approval themselves. We're here for the CVTOA tonight. We put a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of money into this presentation over the last seven months for our membership.
Sergio, let me ask you this question, if I may.
Sure, Ms. Burgen.
So not all taxi owners are members of this organization?
Absolutely, no, they are not, we have two-thirds, and one of-
So one-third is out there uncontrolled?
Well, basically, if you're going to allow the taxi industry to advertise, it could be under these restrictions, because our association has even told the non-members that we would be glad to place advertising with them, there's only one condition, that our members get the advertising first, you know, which is only fair, because they're paying, they've paid for this process to get to this point where we are here tonight.
I might want to clarify, the CVTOA is not a mandatory organization, you don't have to join, it's like you don't have to join the Chamber of Commerce, you haven't got to join the American Institute of Architects, they're organizations that represent common issues. So the percentage, the tier, is represented by Sergio's numbers, two-thirds belong, one-third don't.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I can clarify my question, is, or statement, is that what he's saying is that the members of the CVTOA would adhere to the rules and regulations of which they're here to talk about, and what I'm trying to point out is that there may be other people driving around that are getting the massage parlors and escort services and are not controlled by this, that's a concern.
I can tell you right now that our program with the CVTOA, the CVTOA has guaranteed they would be getting the advertising for the taxi owner, that's the way our program was set up, and it's, I've got advertisers, people willing to advertise from one end of the valley to the other, and there's more than enough to go around, I can tell you that it's mostly restaurants, tanning salons, you know, for whatever, and I, even some people that have nursing homes aren't interested, from what I understand. Just joking.
Only if you sign a contract.
I had to throw that in. But, uh, there, our association would be the answering board for the communities, and no advertising is gonna go up on those cabs unless it goes through the CVTOA. Now, like I said, they don't have to join our program, but if they're putting up advertising, they would have to follow guidelines set up by the communities for the CVTOA, they would have to follow those guidelines. So I'm here saying, let's set up the guidelines here, and let's get them in place, and, you know, these issues of gentleman clubs like you see in Vegas and stuff like that, we're not interested in doing that at all, we're interested in marketing restaurants and pet salons and destination places and resorts and things that promote the communities of the valley. Another one of the issues that we have on these package, packets that you've gotten, the first one, this is, this is the regular, this is called a topper over here, and this is a regular industry standard topper that you would see from New York to Los Angeles. It's light plexiglass, it goes on the top of the taxicab, and the sides there are where the advertisements go. Uh, I had that on, that is not, I just wanted to point out to the city that that was on a cab for three months, it's not an advertisement, it's just a, uh, a statement saying, hey, we live in a great place, but I can tell you right now that the public seemed to like it from the reactions we've gotten. Uh, another issue that we have right now is, as you know, we just had a driver killed on the east end of the valley, here ten days, well, two Sundays ago. Some of these toppers come with a built-in panic light, they say, call nine-one-one, they can be activated from inside the cab, and I'm sure even the police departments here, they, uh, this would, you know, be beneficial in the valley here, all, you got a police officer driving by a cab and he sees that topper light lit up, he knows that there's a problem. Uh, it would sure make the taxi industry sleep better at night, knowing that we had something like that. And to be fair to the other, uh, company that's interested in marketing their advertising, they, their advertising is worked by satellite programming, where they have a device that can actually track the vehicle and tell everybody where that vehicle's at. Now, the other signage on the taxicab that we were interested in would be this picture right here that you have before you, it's a little sign that goes on the back, it's an additional ad sign that fits on the back of the taxi. So basically, what you do on the taxis, you would have three areas of advertising, one, each side of that is a face, there's two faces on that, so you'd have, you could put one advertiser on one side, another on the other, or you could put the same advertisement on the top, which is usually the way it's done, and you could have an advertisement on the back of the cab. This revenue is absolutely, our industry has been devastated since nine-eleven. We have people going out of business, we have, it's not a good situation out there for our industry, we need this. I'm not gonna home in on that part of the discussion, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't absolutely necessary. Did the Council have any other questions regarding this?
Counsel, any question?
I, okay, there's a couple of issues I forgot to, there's also a letter here from Lisa Garvin from Sunline, and Lisa Garvin's, in the package that I gave you, the attorney for Sunline, basically she states that there's no ordinances at Sunline, uh, that would prohibit advertising. And to let you know, in the last two days, I've talked to the City of Indian Wells, Barbara, the Deputy City Clerk down there, or, I take that back, Cory, who's in the Planning Department down there, I guess he's the building director. department down there, I guess he's the building director. He said that it would basically be up to Sunline, the ordinances that Sunline had on advertising. We also talked to La Quinta and Indio, and Robin talked to a couple of the other communities. As far as we know, no one else in the valley has an ordinance against advertising on taxis. And we feel that if we can get together and do this, we, this, this ordinance, you know, work, work this out together and get the little problems worked out on it that we would have with you people, if any. I think, you know, this would benefit everybody, businesses, certainly the taxi industry.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills.
Couple of questions on the, the toppers. If, if you use the sign one, do you not use the current one that you use? Is it, so one is inclusive?
Actually, these were made to replace those. But you can, if Sunline wanted the regular top light, you could have them both installed on it. As you see in that picture right there, you've got the, this top light plus the regular top light on the vehicle. But actually, this is meant to replace that top light because you've got a amber light on the back of it that lights up when your fare is in the cab.
And do, do these have the panic device on them as well?
This, this particular model doesn't-
It could, though.
It could, if you wanted to, yeah. Also, the insurance industry has come out with a pretty remarkable statistic that it's like a 20 or 30% reduction in accidents with taxi cabs that have these on because they're, they're so pronounced on the vehicle that people seem to, you know, want to know who's singing at the Agua Caliente this week. They don't run into you, but I, I don't know. And I'd like to point out another thing, since we're on the issue of talking about this. This item over here, the city of Palm Springs, we got a kick out of this. They're actually advertising on a taxi in London. And the city of Palm Springs is paying this guy 5,000 bucks a year. And it's through the, actually, I guess it's through the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism. But we understand that Palm, the city of Palm Springs picked up the tab on that. So, and it, what we're seeing is, the city of Palm Springs can advertise in London, we want to be able to advertise here.
Thank you, Sergio. Any more comments, Sergio?
I have another, another question, Sergio. Sergio, you mentioned you're looking for three locations. I understand the two, which are on either side of the top.
Right.
The third location on the back?
The back, if it was a sedan?
So, you're saying only, only on the vans? You're not talking about-
Yeah, you've got this picture here?
Yeah.
Yeah, basically, on the vans, this sign would fit right here. And what it is, it's a, it's, it's, it's screwed in on one side, so you open it up and you have this sign here. Be very, it'd be hard to load luggage at the airport, but for 150 bucks a month, I'm sure the owners can make adjustments. On the sedans, it's a lot easier. It actually just fits on the back of the cab on the trunk lid where the, the key is.
So, you're looking at potentially having three locations?
Three locations, correct.
And that's what you're asking for?
That's what we're asking for. I know that we're in a give-and-take situation here.
Okay, any other questions before we go into debate, discussion, direction?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I believe that Ms. Burns, Sergio, did you-
Yes, Ms. Burns was-
She's the secretary treasurer of the organization, she had a couple of comments as well.
Part two of this presentation to make.
Good evening. Here we go. How's that? Thanks again for having us this evening, we really appreciate it. Sergio went over a lot of the fine points on this, and I think a really important thing to reiterate is that we're, our regulations that we're trying to, we are trying to do something very good for the city. We're being, trying to be very cognizant of the standards that you all upheld here. And it's a special place. And I hope you do take that in consideration. And I know that there was another concern regarding other types of advertising that would be rolling billboards and so on. A suggestion would be that the change in regulations apply specifically to taxi cabs. And maybe that would take care of that. I don't know if that is something that is possible, that would be something that your planning department would have to work out. A point, and I, I did meet with many of you, and the point is, is advertisers aren't going to spend their money somewhere. And the media's proven to work. In this situation, there's, is it 300,000 hits a month?
Yeah.
That's documented. It's a very viable form of advertising. I know you all are aware how viable it is because it's in every major city in the country. The part of this is that it's the intent of us to avoid, to avoid the ads of questionable taste. It provides a revenue for our industry. And I need to reiterate that taxi cab drivers are really the goodwill ambassadors here. We're so often the very first people that our tourism people spend with, and they come in the city, we're the last people they spend time with when they get out of the city. We've suffered some really tremendous losses. I know that it's been pounded in over and over again, and I know we're not the only industry, but it's severe. It's very, very severe. I know of people that have, that have gone out of business, it's heartbreaking. And we need a break. This move, this change in the ordinance will really stabilize a whole industry very much overnight. That is how strong this will affect us. It is a very major change. Our industry provides jobs for hundreds of people. We have approximately 170 cabs out there, probably, I don't have the exact number. We probably employ approximately 350 people in our industry. It's, it's a big industry for us. We provide transportation for both the local residents and also for tourism, our number-one industry here. The other issue that Sergio talked about was safety, and I wanted just to add a little bit to that. Besides the fact of the 25% of those taxis are documented in the insurance industry to have less accidents because of the toppers, and I know that you are aware that we just had this unfortunate incident where a taxi cab driver was murdered. I'm not going to say, something like this might have helped him, but I got to tell you, last Sunday night, I got a call from my dispatcher where a woman threatened to slash and kill one of my drivers, and we needed police assistance. And my expectation is that I need, I need to do something safety-wise for my people. I, in good conscience, can't sit here and do nothing. And whether or not it's the topper with the panic light, the income from this change in the ordinance will allow me to do that. And it's important. Our whole industry is getting, the whole, excuse me, population is growing. I expect the crime rate to grow too. It's just natural to expect that. And we need to put some good safety measures in place, and this will so allow us to do it. It's so important. And, of course, I did point this out the last time, that tourism for our city, our area, is promoted absolutely daily if you had taxi cabs with the toppers advertising the film festival, advertising the tram, advertising the restaurants in Palm Springs, Palm Springs Weekend, whatever. And every time they go out of town, that's a great advertisement for Palm Springs because about 10,000 people will see that topper when we go to Los Angeles. Or as we've gone to, you know, Northern California last week, and Oceanside, and Ontario, and LAX today. So, everybody will see that. And that's a great promotion for Palm Springs, it's a great benefit. And, of course, the revenue generated by the advertising, it's a big number. The potential number on this, from as best as we can calculate, is about $1.4 million. And my bet is that a lot of those dollars are going to be spent in the economy of Palm Springs and probably benefit businesses here and real estate sales, sales tax, and the city's going to win. It's a win. My point is, it's a win, 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 win. Palm Springs, local citizens, businesses, and the taxi industry all benefit. And Palm Springs, as far as we can tell, is the only city that has a ban. I do have documentation and writing from the city of Cathedral City that there are no advertising bans. I do also have documentation of the signage from the city of Desert Hot Springs, and there are no bans on advertising. And I'm in the process of receiving, it was promised to me, documentation and writing from the city of Palm Springs Airport. Other than the fact of the city of Palm Springs issue, they, as an airport, do not have any regulations. And I will receive that letter hopefully tomorrow. I just hope that you take a good look at this. It's been a long, hard road to get to this point, and we, we trust you're going to do the right thing. And we don't, we're looking for the downside. It's hard to see the downside, but I see the upside, and I hope you do too. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Appreciate it.
Counsel? Questions, thoughts? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
If you, if you, if you, if you take away the issue of, you know, that it's on a taxi cab and it's moving, and you deal with it particularly as a sign, it wouldn't pass our sign ordinance, I wouldn't think, based on what our standards are. My concern is that, I mean, is aesthetic. I understand all, all the, all the, the other concerns, but this becomes more, more of a, of a sign than, than a fixed sign in that, as was mentioned, I mean, it goes all, goes all over the place. And it doesn't have a quality level to it that I think is acceptable. If it did, then perhaps I might think a little bit differently of it. I sure wouldn't want to see it any more than one location on a vehicle. But, but the, but the concern so much is not, to me, is not the advertising, but the quality of it. And I don't know if other people make these devices that look differently or that are better designed to my aesthetic and, or to, that would conceivably at least meet a sign ordinance requirement. That's a concern that I have, and perhaps that can be addressed, I don't know. But I, I think it's, if it, if it could be more integrated-looking to the, to the vehicle, and I know, and I'm not saying that it needs to look like it was put on by the manufacturer, but just something that's a little more sensitive to, to the way it's mounted, to the way it looks, I think it's, it has a viability. And I can certainly understand the, the reason for doing it. And I certainly like the, I like the, the safety aspect. I like the, the potential that it eliminates the topper that you have now, so everything's combined in one, which I think is a, is a, is a plus. So, it's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mills, other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Ralish Burge.
According to the staff report, the staff recommends that a minor amendment to the existing ordinance be removed, which declares, which is declared to be a nuisance. My question is, who declares it to be a nuisance?
You know, I think the reason we wanted to make that change in the ordinance is that sort of takes us into the nuisance abatement process, which we use on real property. And it's not necessary in terms of an enforcement mechanism to declare it to be a nuisance. If it's a violation of the ordinance, it could just, you could proceed without going through the nuisance abatement sort of process. So, we felt that that language in the current ordinance that talks about it being a nuisance abatement is, in the, in this context, an impractical enforcement mechanism. So, if you were to retain the restrictions that you have, we think you ought to get rid of the concept of declaring it a nuisance and just make it a violation of the code, which would be enforced by issuing a citation.
Will there be a sign permit fee to the city?
Well, we, we have not developed a permitting process for this because currently they're prohibited. If the council's direction is to allow this type of signage, and the council would like us to take a look at whether or not there is a fee requirement for either issuance of permits or enforcement actions in follow-up, we certainly could look at that. But those are the types of things we would typically start to develop if the council says you would like to have this type of advertising on taxis. And then we have to work that back through the Planning Commission, you know, per the city's zoning ordinance requirements, and then they make a recommendation to council.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Doug, if I'm understanding what the ordinance says, if these, if these toppers just had the name of the cab company on them, they look exactly like they do now, that's completely legal. Is that right?
That's correct.
So, if it says Las Casuelas?
And it becomes remote advertising.
Unless they own the cab.
Mr. Reddy, I'd like to ask your airport director at the table, please. And the question I have is, as many of you know, in the baggage claim area of the airport, there are a number of wall posters and a number of column wraps. And what controls do you have over what goes on there?
Well, we have a concession agreement with our advertising firm that puts all those in there. And within that concession agreement, we have some controls as far as content of advertising. But because of constitutional things, we have to be careful about how much of that we can do. But generally, we have not had a problem with advertising that would probably be unsuitable for everybody to see in an airport terminal.
Do you have advertising for gentleman's clubs and the advertising in the baggage claim?
There is, yes.
Can you not restrict that? Or does the Constitution preclude you from doing so? And that may go back to legal.
You know, it's interesting because as a private association, if they want to have restrictions on the sort of advertising, they can do that. The problem is, when the government starts to regulate that, then that's where we have problems. And we can regulate obscene materials, but that's, the obscenity is the area where if it's obscene, we can regulate it. But if it's in poor taste, that's, we can't regulate that.
And how does one determine obscene versus poor taste?
Well-
Can you show me that in, in any code book, regulatory book, law book?
There's a-
Case law?
Famous quote by Justice Douglas that-
Yes, I just know it when I see it.
I'll know it when I see it.
I was got holed up in court, by the way.
It's, the, there is a definition of obscenity which, you know, appeals to purient interest and, but from a practical standpoint, it's, what is obscene materials is probably generally pretty far over the edge of what most of you would think would be in good taste. Just because it kind of looks offensive doesn't mean it's obscene. So, the, as to the third of the, I mean, that would be nice that they would have those regulations and that the two-thirds comply. But when, when you open the forum up, then as to the other one-third, if the association's regulations are fairly restrictive, as they're suggesting, you, really, the government wouldn't- have very good controls over the other one-third, because that would be governmental regulation as opposed to private regulation.
So, let's assume the one-third doesn't belong to CVTOA, watches what the other two-thirds does and says, "I want some of this same stuff. I'm going to put my bonnet on there." Who says they can't?
Well, yeah, I, I know, I, maybe I'm not clear. If you say to the association, "It's okay to do that," you're saying every taxicab can...
Whether a member of CVTOA abiding by regulations or not.
No, we couldn't.
Can't contain it and can't control it.
Right.
Okay. I mean, you might be able to get the CVTOA's cooperation towards certain types of ads, certain issues of concern, but it's not something that is enforceable universally.
No, we could say that if you, you can't have signage that's obscene, but we, we could not have regulations that go to the extent as to what was suggested here they would do through their regulation. I'm not saying their regulation would be invalid as to their members. That, that's fine, they can do that. We, we couldn't impose that as a regulation.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden?
Mr. Oshair, can we then say that if we choose to do this, that we will contract with a specific organization? And if we set up the guidelines through that organization, anyone who wishes to join has to go through that organization?
No, I don't see how we can require, people have constitutional rights of association to associate with whom they want. So, we can't dictate that in order for you to operate with certain benefits, you have to join a regulate, an association in order to do that.
Which would mean, then, that we would have no control over the standards that we set up with that one organization?
Exactly. Right. And, and with signs, you, we cannot regulate the content of signs except very narrowly. For example, we can prohibit obscene materials. But that's, you know, that's a very restrictive standard.
That's an open, open account in the case law world, I'd say. I mean, it's like saying, here's the regulations, and we'll make a deal with the Chamber of Commerce, and they're all going to buy-bye, and you're not a member of the chamber, so...
And you're, and you're talking about Palm Springs. And then there's eight other cities that are involved.
And the county.
Right.
Yeah. Sunline permits wrapping of buses. You see them for the tram, you see them for the Indian Canyons, even the Film Festival, I think, has two of them. And when Sunline debated that years ago, the issue was that there would be no advertising that would be in direct competition with any other jurisdiction, so that you wouldn't see, you know, a resort from a down-valley city driving through your city, and they wouldn't see our city's resorts, restaurants, as a, as a wrap, driving through their cities. And the cities all said, "As long as the attractions, which are universally beneficial, the living desert, to benefit all of us, the living, the canyons, Film Festival benefits all of us." The Film Festival actually broke into the next wave by saying "events," because it was attractions, and then it said, "Well, events." So, in theory, the Skins Game could take it, Bob Hope, Chrysler Classic could offer it, Frank Sinatra could bring it on, because again, the event is a value-wide benefit. So, there were restrictions in, in the, in the body, if you will, of Sunline in trying to determine what allowable usage can you have. Now, Sunline has bus stops, and the intent of the bus stops is to generate revenue on, on two fronts. One is for the maintenance of the bus stops, shelters for protection of those who are waiting for the bus. That's how they built a lot of those structures. And then there's a minor amount, and I don't think Tom Kinnar is here, I don't see him, but there he is, okay. A very minor amount comes to each of the cities that, if you will, play, play along with that sort of thing. It's a very small dollar amount, it's not actually a revenue stream that we heavily rely upon. Certain cities have actually bought their way out of that and took out the bus stops. They don't want the advertising at all, the remote advertising. Some of the concerns was the visual imagery, the cluttering of the street, and they didn't want competing restaurants in their city or competing, because in that case, there were no regulations controlling any content. So, again, you speak of one restaurant in another area, some cities have basically been trying to remove all of those and build their own free-of-advertising sort of thing. I think Indian Wells, being a prime example, elected not to participate in that program. I think Ranch Mirage is either out or getting out of that program. And I appreciate people looking at some of the rules, or talking with some of the staff. On the taxicab committee, we currently do not regulate this issue. I mean, we try to minimize our regulation of any aspect of the cabs. We just don't want to be a, a heavy hand regulatory agency. It's public safety that we look at. It's that kind of thinking. But we don't regulate advertising, since I'm part of it. So, the reason you say there's no regulations is because we don't look at that. If someone said, "Do you want to regulate it?" Sunline doesn't want to do any more than they have to, but they deferred to the cities, saying each of the cities, as you indicated, Jeanie, has their own set of rules, and the sign just can't go up or come down between jurisdictions. So, it has to be universally accepted by some, if you will, regional approach to how we're going to do this. This may be a first step, first stop, but just like the airport doesn't have any rules or regulations, well, if they were asked to look at it, do you want to deal with it? I'm sure the airport commission would look at it, whether they establish it or not is up to the commission to recommend, but they don't exist, because we don't just have regulations for regulations' sake. But, but typically, we do not, as Doug indicated, we don't permit remote advertising. It's a standard that we have. It's a visual quality of life issue that we've protected over the years. And any fraction of that, in my estimation, begins the cascade of other requests. Well, if they can do it, why can't we do it? And if they both can do it, then why can't the third party do it? So, if you open this avenue for advertising, and you can justify it, mind you, in a number of ways, you may in fact open it for others. With regards to the safety light, the 911 call beacon, I don't think you'd find anyone saying, "No, you can't have that." Okay? Now, there may be a cost incurred with that, and part of this is to offset the cost of that by this revenue stream, but I don't think there's a nexus between, "I've got to have this so I can have that." If the safety issue is a safety issue, you obviously deal with the safety issue. But this has a whole different piece. And this piece may not find anyone finding it offensive, because it isn't. I mean, the image right there is quite pleasant, but there's no quality control over the, over the actual ads itself. And as you know, ads are ads. I mean, they are what they are. Some are nice, some are pleasant, some are not. So, I, I just offer you that as some indication of some of the thoughts I've got. But any, any discussion at this point would have to engage openly a regional approach to how the other cities want to deal with this. We don't simply mandate it and it's done. We don't, we don't have that authority outside of our own city.
Okay, other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Moe?
Sunline is still the regulatory agency over the taxis?
Yes, sir. And again, our regulatory authority, by our own determination, has been public safety. It's all we do. We don't regulate any other aspect. They must have certain features of lights and signage and poster rates and kind of the quality of the vehicle, maintenance, inspections, things of that nature, drug testing, fingerprinting, background tests. Again, it's all based on public safety. It never tried to qualify the advertising aspects of, of it, because it's never been asked to enforce that sort of stuff.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Initially, when we set up this program and referred ours to taxi service under Sunline, we had some very specific guidelines that we were looking at that we haven't seen under Sunline, which did not deal necessarily with the safety issues. There was a training program that we looked at, where they were supposed to receive training in order to greet all of the people. There was a uniform aspect that we talked about. So, there, there were other things, and we never heard from Sunline on those, but those were definite recommendations that we initially made.
They were, and those were interfaced with the industry itself. And the industry, if you want to bring these two ladies and gentlemen back up to the table, I don't think they're interested in uniforms. I could be wrong. Might surprise me.
Well, no, I'm just, you, you just said that it was, that the sole purpose was to deal with the regulatory aspects. And I'm saying that, no, we made some very specific recommendations that were outside of that venue when we put it there.
Right.
And, and as a matter of fact, we had asked at one point for a report on those issues.
Again, what, what we were asked and recommend, recommendations are, all we do now, all the Sunline does now, as that entity, as that regional body, is deal with those issues. We did a peer review, we've done a second peer review recently, whereby, you know, we talked about the issue of, you know, the appearance of the cabs, and it was done by an outside, basically an outside audit. They gave pretty high, high grades to the taxi industry, I think. Most by and large, there were not a lot of complaints, and the outside people thought it was run, run very well, both on the regulatory side and on the caps, on the industry side. I mean, if there's more things that you want us to carry back at, to Sunline to look at, again, we can, we can do it, but it's a regional approval process. You know, we alone don't dictate what they will or will not do.
Then I do have a question of Sergio.
Sergio, do you got to come to the mic, please? Make sure the mic is on, please.
Has the industry approached Sunline with this concern?
Yes, we have. Originally, when we came here, we went to the planning commission, we had someone from the city planning commission say, "Well, why don't you go over and talk to Sunline about it?" We went to Sunline, and they said, "We have absolutely nothing to do with that. Take it back to the city of Palm Springs."
Okay, well, I'm just trying to get some, some, some direction for us to, to give to them. You went to the organization that is the regulatory agency, and they sent you to us. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Well, they sent you back to all the cities, not just to Palm Springs.
No, they, they, basically, no, no other city. We've talked to all the cities. The cities have all told us they have no ordinances against advertising on taxis. There are no ordinances anywhere on the books. That's what we've been told.
Okay.
Then perhaps if we ask Sunline to deal with this issue as a request from us as one of the participants in the authority, maybe it'll make a difference as opposed to just the taxicabs themselves.
I, I will carry that back as your representative on Sunline and chairman of the Sunline Taxi Committee, but Sunline does not have a tremendous interest in regulating the sign ordinances of the nine cities. And that's what this is. This is allowing something in your city that currently Palm Springs prohibits. Now, other cities may not have it in writing, but if you want to vest that authority in us, what we would probably do is go back to every member and say, "Will you allow us to put these regulations in place? Will you allow us to build this advertising program?" So, we would go to a regional approach.
Okay.
Because we are, we are a regional body. It's all Sunline is, we're all the members.
Well, what would you, what kind of direction would you suggest that we give to them? They've come to us asking us for information and to do something that we don't feel that we can do, because we have an agency that, where we have that responsibility. So, what would you suggest?
I would suggest, if the city of Palm Springs, this governing body, has an interest in affording the industry an opportunity to advertise, give that, give that direction to staff, and they can commence work on it. We alone won't dictate to the Valley that it's okay. I suggest to you that then the remaining cities will have to make some formal announcement of their position on this issue, whether by a formal discussion or resolution or further discussion. I don't think someone's just going to say, "Oh, okay, laissez-faire, let someone else handle it." I would suggest that. And again, Sunline is a regulatory agency that's empowered by its members. So, if you, if you want to try to get that agency to deal with this, they're going to come back and ask what you want us to do. So, this is only first step in a lot of steps, if in fact, we want to even encourage it.
So, Mr. Mayor, so if the city of Palm Springs allows this and say Ranch Mirage doesn't, is it, are, are you saying that, that the taxi would have to go around Ranch Mirage to be able, because if they went through there and they were, had, did not have an ordinance that allowed the moving sign, then they could be ticketed?
That's a possible scenario. I can't dictate that that's what would happen, but it's a possible scenario.
We, we have taxis from Los Angeles and Ontario coming through here every day, and they all have signs on them, advertising signs. And a city cannot issue a citation to a cab from a jurisdiction where advertising's allowed. You can't do it.
City allows any cab to drop off at the airport, but not every cab can pick up at the airport. Is that correct, Mr. Smoot? So, we have regulations that, if you will, protect our industry in that case. You can't have scabs coming in from out of the valley, sitting at the prime location, deriving, if you will, benefit from an industry that's already struggling. So, there are regulations that say, there are certain things that can have it and can't happen. I, I don't want to give you the answer on this regional approach, because I don't have it, but I suggest to you that the dialogue doesn't start and end at this table. It will engage with the other members. And if you want to defer back to Sunline, I can only suggest, again, no dictate, that Sunline's going to ask every city to take a position, so it's going to be back before you and ask you, "What is your position? Will you move forward? What are your concerns? What do you want to regulate?" Sunline alone will not dictate a policy that is not embraced by the membership.
Can I just throw something in?
Yes, sir.
On that. Right now, I, we're, our association is fighting Sunline, because the mayor forgot to tell everybody that Sunline actually has gone into the taxicab industry, the business themselves. They've just unloaded 50 CNG vehicles on our industry, which has decimated our industry totally. So, they're selling taxis to us, giving these guys, it's just causing too many problems.
Sergio, that's a perception that you have in Sunline, and that's not the arena here, nor is it what's agendized here.
But you said, you, you gave a list of what Sunline does, and you forgot to say, "Oh, they also sell..."
In a regulatory sense. I'm trying to remain focused on the regulatory sense. Again, the issue you have about the Sunline CNG cabs is something that's not agendized here and, and has not been resolved in at Sunline. The issue here is advertising, whether or not we permit remote advertising in the city of Palm Springs. That's the issue before the council right now.
Right. And by the way, on those CNG vehicles, you're advertising for Ford Motor Company. How come Sunline can advertise Ford Motor Company on these vehicles? Just a question.
I'm, I'm not prepared to answer that based on what's before us tonight.
Well, it's advertising, isn't it?
Okay.
I saw it.
All right. Now, I, again, I ask the council for, what direction do you want to take this topic? And do you want us to instruct staff to work or not work?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
I, I think as, as was, was stated earlier, this is a regional issue. It is not a local issue. I don't think, I mean, if you've got, you've got cities that don't allow the, the bus stop advertising and essentially bought it out, as you've mentioned, I can see potential of a problem if all of a sudden, cabs going through everybody's city, regulated by, by Sunline, are advertising. And cities that don't have ordinances like ours may have ordinances like ours, or may create ordinances like, like ours. I would think the way to do this is for, if it's Sunline, if it's C-Veg, if it's whatever, but a regional entity needs to get, as you mentioned, all, all cities to be involved in this. So, they don't get an okay out of Palm Springs, then all of a sudden, they can't do it in Ranch Mirage, and it, it just becomes a, a problem. So, I think every city needs, needs to buy in. If Sunline is the basis to make that happen, great. But, I mean, it's not going to be fair to the industry to allow them to do this here and not otherwise anywhere else. It's, I, I think that's the way it needs to be handled, and it doesn't sound like, like an easy process, not at all. And I know it hasn't even, hasn't been that to this point. But I think the solution needs to be regional. And I'm not exactly sure how that happens, but if the mayor's willing to take it back to Sunline, that might, that might be a start.
What I would bring back to Sunline is a request, if they have an interest in even being involved in the regulatory of this. They may say they don't want to regulate this. So, then you got to figure out who regulates this, if in fact, as David said, government regulates it at all. So, I mean, this has got more complexity than just, do you want to do it or not do it? Other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. If I can be blunt, maybe this is a situation, we have two pieces of the documentation from the cities of the region indicating that there's no regulations in place. Maybe we're looking at this, or if I can offer this, that you don't want to okay this regulation in anticipation that they might decide that they don't want, the other cities want taxi regulation. Maybe it is that this is the last part of the puzzle, that they've already made a stand, there are no regulations. I've got documentation from Cathedral City here and Desert Hot Springs there and so on, and this is the last step to getting to taxi advertising. I'm just saying, the cup half-full or half-empty, if you get my drift.
Understood, understood. But what we don't know is if in fact, cities have not discussed whether they want to regulate that. Will they?
But, sir...
Because they've never been asked to regulate it.
But, but sir, if they had a concern about it, wouldn't you think they'd have a regulation in place now?
I don't think government just makes regulations just to make regulations. They deal with regulations based on issues before them. Just like we're discussing this today, we wouldn't have thought to change the taxicab remote advertising ordinance unless it came to our attention. So... So, I just don't think that they're going to have it because they don't want it. They're going to have it because they want it, or they have to have at least, they have afforded the opportunity to debate it within their own jurisdiction. I think that has to be offered to each city. I think each city has to have an open dialogue, much like this or better, that says, "We do or do not want it." I don't think this is the last piece. If we blessed it tonight, which we can't take action, as you know, this is a study session, this would not be the end of it all, and you can stop putting ads up tomorrow.
I understand.
That is not how this process is going to work.
I understand.
We don't have that authority. We are basically one of many cities in the jurisdiction. And I speak of the Sunline jurisdiction.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
I guess the part that's a little sad is not so much whether or not we say yes or no, because I think that there's more information that's needed before we can say either, but the fact that there, we can't give you any direction on how to approach it to make that determination. So, it sounds perhaps like you need a two-tiered approach, and that is to address all the cities and Sunline at the same time, and perhaps in that process, we'll find an answer.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorel Aspergen.
Also, I think, Robin, our ordinance, as I read it, says signs on vehicles. That would be my car, but your car is a passenger transport for hire.
Yes.
Which differentiates your car from my car.
Certainly.
So, I mean, that's another issue. We don't have that. I mean, that would be a whole separate ordinance.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ready.
As a suggestion, C-VAG is a model. They took up the cause for the massage masseur industry, went to C-VAG, and wanted a valley-wide model participation, and C-VAG took on that request, and this, maybe this would fall into the same thing. So, I understand that Sunline may not want to get into that regulation, but C-VAG being a regional body may want to do it. They get the answer from all nine cities, and then they could send those recommendations to Sunline. It just is a model, some model massage ordinance seemed to be a good model for this kind of regional approach, and that may be a suggestion.
I think the model might be good, and the process by which it undertook the analysis might be good, but just to realize in the massage ordinance, it wasn't universally accepted. I don't believe we embraced it.
No, we did not.
Okay? We did not embrace it. So, it doesn't guarantee, and in the case of massage, okay, so we still have to get licensed here, but in the case of the cab industry, if one city says no, you go back to the possible scenario, "I can't bring this vehicle into your city." So, again, the process will not ensure result. It is the process that determines result.
And have--
The dog campus, universally accepted? No.
Have we heard of any other cities that are saying anything about that?
Well, they've, actually, they've made the request to C-VAG, if, maybe you can help me, Sergio or Robin, the TAC last week, they brought the question up.
I could probably shed some light on that, David. After this item was placed on our agenda, I received a call earlier this week from the Planning Director in Indian Wells, who voiced his concerns about what the city was doing, and indicated to me that regardless of what Palm Springs does, he's going to recommend to their Planning Commission this week and ultimately to the city council that they adopt an urgency ordinance, basically adopting our prohibition on signage on taxi cabs, that they're so concerned that this is going to proliferate, that they're going to immediately take action to make sure that this issue does not come up so that they can now take care of it now.
I mean, I think one thing relating to this regional issue is it needs to, you know, most of taxi business is going in and out of the airport. So, in fact, the city of Palm Springs regulations on this signage issue tend to be, have a much wider impact. It's not necessary for other communities to have an ordinance dealing with this because if Palm Springs has an ordinance on it, the taxis need to comply with that ordinance. It would only become a problem for the other communities in terms of their standards would be if the city, Palm Springs eliminated its restriction, then it becomes an issue in the other cities. So, there's a pretty logical reason why there wouldn't be other cities right now with those restrictions. Now, it may very well be that in fact if you do this regional approach, the various communities in general don't have a problem with it, other than Indian Wells, but--
I should let you know that your Palm Springs Airport is not the majority where the rides are coming out of. They're doing 300 rides a day out of there.
Okay. Again, the difficulty, this is, and I'm not suggesting, but if one city says yes and one city says no, and the cab pulls up at whatever the location is a point of origin, and the passenger says, "Take me to so-and-so," say, "Well, I can't go there because I got the advertising on my roof, so I can't go into that city. You'll have to get another cab." And then the public has to look for a cab that doesn't have a bonnet? I mean, it gets, unless it's universally accepted and the regulations are universally embraced, it cannot, I don't think it can work. We spent years trying to bring Indio back into the family because Indio did not belong to us, and we brought them in, and now it's a valley-wide effort. So, again, I only suggest to you it's going to take a little bit more work.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
I appreciate the recommendation of city manager, Mr. Ready, but I think it would be a little challenging to have the government agency that has the authority over everything else and to remove that one component. I would think that if someone within that industry went to the regulatory agency and said, "This is what we want to do," I think it's up to them to say, "Well, yes or no," and to make that determination. There has to be some process within there to do that. For them to run all over the place to do this is ridiculous. I mean, I think it's the responsibility of Sunline to say, "Well, we have no process. We'll set up a process," something, but I think that's where it is. That's where we put the authority. They need to deal with it.
Okay. Now, does this council wish to embrace the idea of allowing investigation of remote sign advertising on cabs? Because you're going to get a direction out of this body to take it back to Sunline. Is it the pleasure of this council to do this? Well, if you want to send it to Sunline, again, Sunline can accept or reject the offer based on what they're going through in their own organization now. They can say, "Yes, we'll go forward. Here's our program as to how we're going to do this." But Sunline is trying to figure out its own issues right now.
And this is part of their own issues?
Okay, that's fine. Now, does this council want remote advertising on cabs? I'm opposed to remote advertising on vehicles, on cabs. I think it adds to the visual clutter. It detracts from the visual experience of Palm Springs. We are known for our quality of life from a visual standpoint. We have a very, I think, extensive, at times liberal and at times controlling, sign ordinance, and I think it reaps a benefit for our community. Part of what we offer this community is in fact that relaxed visual atmosphere. Additional signage, especially that which moves, drives about, I think will add to the visual clutter. I am not supportive of remote advertising in this instance.
Okay.
Now, if the council wants to go forward, obviously the majority determines that.
The issue isn't so much, I don't think whether or not we want it, they want it, and so I think it should go to the regulatory agency, and it's up to them to say yes or no.
I want to try to clarify this. Sunline does not dictate the design criteria of the city. It does not dictate the sign ordinances. If you don't allow it, they can't permit it. So, you have to allow it in the first place. So, if this council wants to do it, you would become the first of the nine cities to embrace remote advertising, and then we can build consensus amongst the other members. If we don't want to do it, again, we can carry it back, but the reaction is Palm Springs doesn't want it. So, the question I have before you is, you can send it back to the Sunline and ask them what they want to do on a valley-wide basis. The question is before you, do you want to embrace this? Because you're going to then activate city staff to start building a sign ordinance that can then be represented to Sunline as a model for others to then begin to debate. This is not going to be an overnight. You've got to get nine departments to analyze how they're going to set up the universal ordinance. Look how long it took to do the dog park, the massage ordinance. I mean, this is a very, very complex, time-consuming. If you want it, that's what's before you tonight. Do you want to allow this to go forward?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
No.
That was easy. There's two. Sorel Aspergen, Mr. Oden, what's your direction?
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Mr. Oden.
I certainly understand the concerns about it. So, I wouldn't say that I'm free of concerns, but the fact is, is that if this, if this organization that is, that we are part of in terms of the regulatory agency, I think that the process needs to go through them and not through us. We are, we don't have it currently in our ordinance, okay? And that, and we're fine with that. And if there's going to be a change, there needs to be a program that might be acceptable to all the cities. We may end up being the only one that says no. But if we have the process that they can go through, through the regulatory agency, I think that's where it should go.
If I could follow up on that, are you saying that if it went through regulatory agency and Sunline decided it was a good thing to regulate and decided it was a good idea, and the other cities decided it was a good idea, then perhaps you would agree to change Palm Springs ordinance to allow that in Palm Springs? Is that what you're saying?
That's possible.
Yeah, because until we change our ordinance, irrespective of what Sunline does, it wouldn't be permitted here. Okay.
And I'm trying to get to that point today. Do you want to go forward? Much like when we did the massage ordinance, do you want to look at it? And we said, "No, we don't want to do it." We looked at it, and we said, "No, we don't want to do it." And then we came to a point and said, "Don't want to go forward," and the rest of the Valley went forward. But this is going to be different. And I think what's before you is, how do you want to proceed? If you just want to give it back to Sunline--
I guess what I'm saying is that if we all say no here--
Yes.
That says one thing, okay? It says no. That still doesn't answer their question in terms of how they should proceed. And I'm saying, we have a regulatory agency that should have some process to address the concerns of people who are part of that agency.
And the agency that regulates is asking the jurisdiction in this case, because it's the first--
They've not asked us to do anything.
It's agendized. Well, all right, the question's going to be, does the city of Palm Springs want it?
We don't know what it's going to be. Let the process go forward, and then we'll see. Let's just let it go there and see.
Well, at this point, you've got two that don't want it and one that does. Do you want to go forward?
No.
We said no for Palm Springs. We didn't say that it couldn't go to the agency. And that's Sunline.
All right, so give me clear directions for Sunline. The city of Palm Springs is split on whether they want this or not.
No. No. We're just saying, what, send it to Sunline.
It's been to Sunline. What do you want? Sunline does not want to deal with this. They don't want to regulate. They're not empowered to do so. It's not in their bylaws to deal with the regulation of signs. That's each city's jurisdictional control. We have to mandate as members as to whether or not we want Sunline to regulate these signs based on our controls.
Have we, as a city, officially asked them to do anything? I don't remember requesting that.
No, we haven't. Now, what do you want them to do?
And that's what I'm saying. Let's officially ask them to address this issue.
And how would you like that addressed?
Let me ask you a question, Doug. Why can't they go to Rancher Mirage and get a sign permit for their cabs there instead of here?
Well, I've not researched the Rancher Mirage--
I don't know.
--ordinance. But the issue would be there. Does Rancher Mirage regulate this type of signage? Have they even contemplated regulating this type of signage? So, whether or not they could get a permit or not, we'd have to research. We've not done that. You know, what we typically don't do is spend a lot of staff time on chasing down ordinance issues unless we see direction from Planning Commission, city manager, or council to spend staff time on it. And, you know, there's legal implications. We've asked the city attorney not to do in-depth research. We just need to know if you want us to work on it.
My point is, if taxis are coming into Palm Springs every day from Los Angeles that have advertising on their roof, make your home someplace other than Palm Springs and bring your cab in, just like the other companies are. I don't understand.
They can drop off, but they can't pick up? At least at the airport. I don't know what the other regulations are.
At the airport, but they can go anywhere.
And they're only getting 300 a day out of Palm Springs Airport anyway, so that's one a good day. But they could pick up on Talkwitz or-- And I certainly, I would, I want to know, who is going to regulate? Who's going to say the sign should be so big and what color and what the design is? Who declares what's good and what's bad?
If the city were to decide that it's okay to have these signs, then the city would establish regulations over the size, et cetera. We can regulate the size, color, blah, blah, blah. We can't regulate the content.
Cannot regulate the content.
I'm sorry. I thought you were asking the question, who would regulate it?
I'm saying, now, I mean, there needs to be someone that's taking control of this. And we've sent the rest of the issue to Sunline.
Well, right now, your ordinance doesn't permit it.
I understand that, David.
Okay. Well, I guess what's a little confusing is if, what I'm hearing is, of the four people here, two members of the council are not interested in changing your current ordinance. So, it could go to Sunline, and they can go to Sunline, somebody else can go to Sunline and see whether Sunline wants to regulate it, but irrespective of what Sunline did, it still wouldn't be permitted in this community unless there are three people on the council that are willing to amend the ordinance.
And I think what I heard was that, that there were members of this council that really wanted to hear what Sunline would say if this were brought to them by request of one of their cities. That's what I heard. I understand it's not in there now. That's not to say that it couldn't be added.
And I can accept the request on behalf of Sunline. What do you want us to do? How do you want us to proceed?
But you, you can't sit here and now ask that question. You're one person from the board. That needs to go to the board, and they need to come back, I mean, to make some sort of recommendation collectively about what they want to do.
It's kind of hard when you don't like it.
Yes.
And you're chairman of the taxi. I mean, so, you know, it is kind of a conflict kind of thing.
No, it's not a conflict. It's just a difference in opinion.
Well, a perceived--
Well, there's no conflict of interest. No, as for legal, there's no conflict of interest.
No, no.
And I wouldn't want to be tainted if someone has a conflict. I don't have a conflict. I have a position. That's all it is, is a position. Now, I carry the position of the city council as your representative, and I want to know what your position is. You say, "Take it back to Sunline." I'll take it back to Sunline, and what's your expectation that comes out of it? Do you want us to try to construct the process by which the Valley reviews this? Is that the request?
Yes.
That's got to be it, isn't it?
Yes, that has to be it.
How does the Valley investigate this? Because it's not one jurisdiction.
No, it isn't.
I mean, if that's not it, please just tell me in an articulate fashion what it is you specifically want.
That, that is sufficient.
How do we develop a process by which we determine if the cities want?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Is that clear to all parties at the table? No work required of planning, no work required by our legal?
No.
Okay.
At the risk of throwing one other little issue in here--
Then don't.
We did start off with a specific, narrow, small, little question, which was whether to amend our ordinance to take out this nuisance abatement process in terms of the current ordinance, and we had brought that ordinance forward, and the direction of the council was--
Then it would have to be, at this point, if we're saying, we're referring it to the authority, then it would have to be no at this time.
Okay, so in terms--
It would have to be no at this time.
In terms of the enforcement of our current ordinance, we should use a nuisance abatement process to enforce our current ordinance.
Oh, the part that you want to remove, that one statement?
What, yes. What we, what we wanted to do, we felt the nuisance abatement process in terms of enforcing this ordinance was not a very workable process, and so we had suggested a small technical amendment to delete that language so that it would be enforced through a citation process. And that's all we started to bring forward, and then this other issue came up, and the And then this other issue came up and the council wanted to go through a study session. So as I, I understand the direction on the two issues that we've talked up till now, I still am not clear on whether staff should go ahead and bring forward the ordinance to take that one...
So we still want to do the amendment. It's the recommendation, what should we do? And I'd say take it out.
Okay, so it'd be okay to bring that ordinance forward?
Strengthen the order to allow for greater enforcement. Yes. Bring it forward.
Thank, thank you.
Okay. Well, that was clear. Is that unanimous consent? Does everyone have what they need from Taxi then?
Yes.
Okay. Now, do you want to take a recess at this time? You're an hour and a half in before we go into Convention Center because it's going to be a long presentation also.
Yes.
Okay, let's take a quick recess then and we'll come back and convene shortly.
Greetings from City Hall. I'm David Reddy, your city manager, and this is my buddy Thoreau. Right, Thoreau?
Yes.
We're here today to remind you to get your dog license renewed, or if you don't have one, please come to City Hall and get your dog license. It's important in case your dog wanders off or gets lost, we'll make sure it's returned to you safely. It is required in the City of Palm Springs and in the state of California. Even if you're just a part-time resident here, it certainly is a smart thing to get your dog license. For more information, you can call City Hall at the City Hotline, look at our website, or just come on down to City Hall or to the animal shelter. And with that, Thoreau, any parting words we need to say? Anyway, please get your dog license renewed. Thank you very much. Greetings from City Hall. I'm David Reddy, your city manager, and this is my buddy Thoreau. Right, Thoreau?
Yes.
We're here today to remind you to get your dog license renewed, or if you don't have one, please come to City Hall and get your dog license. It's important in case your dog wanders off or gets lost, we'll make sure it's returned to you safely. It is required in the City of Palm Springs and in the state of California. Even if you're just a part-time resident here, it certainly is a smart thing to get your dog license. For more information, you can call City Hall at the City Hotline, look at our website, or just come on down to City Hall or to the animal shelter. And with that, Thoreau, any parting words we need to say? Anyway, please get your dog license renewed. Thank you very much.
We'll call the meeting back to order. Our next item on the agenda, which is item number two, is the Convention Center Phase Two expansion. Mr. Reddy, I believe you have a staff report for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As part of our update, it's time to really bring you up to date on our progress on the Convention Center. There are some decisions the city council needs to be aware of and give us direction on in terms of design and our schedule. We have a comprehensive, in-depth report for you this evening. Al Smoot, the project director, is here. Mike Fontana, who is our representative, is here. And Jim Dunn, the director of the Convention Center. All three of them have different components they need to brief council. And with that, I would ask for the presentation to begin. I believe that's with Mr. Smoot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. Mr. Mayor and members of council, we do have quite a bit of information to walk you through and I'm going to try to walk you through some of that and point out on the drawings and other things where we are. I guess the first thing I want to let you know is your project team is pushing this thing ahead as fast as we can. And it is moving a little bit behind schedule, but it's moving and we hope to, to achieve everyone's goals that were set out when we started. What I'd like to do is kind of walk you through the floor plan. It's changed a little bit from once, since you have last seen it and kind of give you the background on it and talk a little bit about the interiors and the parking lot before I move on to costs and schedule. Got my pointer. This big drawing that I put up here is really three sheets pasted together of the, of the working drawings themselves and I'd like to kind of walk you through it. The, the blue hatched area is the existing building as it sits today. The phase one remodel was basically the Springs Theater area, which was this area, and the kitchen area, which was over here. And that is all complete and being utilized. The expansion that we're contemplating for the facility is the area that's in yellow, which basically wraps all the way around the building. And that's one of the first concerns that your design and construction team has had is not only are we going to be building on a building that is occupied, but we're going to surround it completely while we do it. So it's, it's adding to the logistical nightmare of this project. However, we're up to the challenge and we, we haven't figured out as to how we can do this and keep things working. Where we are with the design now, we currently have an expansion to the exhibit hall, which takes us up to the 100,000 square feet, which was the program that was established. We're looking at a flex area that can be used for meeting rooms as well as a large area for a ballroom that's being added to the west side. Looking at a, a large pre-function and registration area on the west side of the building. And then there's offices and some issues of a kitchen around here that we'll talk about in a minute. Additionally, when the last time you saw this, we were talking about additional pre-function and registration on the east side also, so we could operate this building from two directions in case there's two clients in there. And taking the entire parking lot area that's on the east side currently and really turning that into an outside meeting area to where meals could be served out there as well as, as meetings could be conducted out there. Because when Jim did his survey of potential users, that's one of the things that they felt was very important. So that is the project as we had it basically designed at design development, which was completed back in July. At that point, we started looking at costs and I'll go into those a little bit more specifically here in a moment. But as, as an outgrowth of that, we had to look at the possibility of some alternates that could be removed from the project or added to the project in either case to try to get us within budget. And the biggest alternate that we looked at was this particular area on the west side, which included that additional pre-function and the outside meeting area space and a covered trellis and other things that were out there. And if you look at this drawing, at the current time, we're, we're working on the drawings to show this as the base bid. And the base bid would be to continue what is currently on the west side of the Convention Center, which kind of ties to the Wyndham around this side of the building, have no pre-function, no registration area, and leave the parking lot the way it is. That would be the base bid. The alternate would be an addition of this entire corner area, which, which becomes the outside meeting area. And so that would be bid as an alternate in the process. The other issue that's been an on-again, off-again alternate is the kitchen area, which is up in this area of the building. When we last talked to you, that was being designed as an alternate. However, when we got into the actual structural design of this building, in order to carry the lateral load of this large, open area that's going to be the ballroom, we needed something to carry a lateral load in this location. We started looking at what we would have to tear out of the existing building and it was determined that it's cheaper for us to actually build the shell of the kitchen, not as a kitchen, but actually as the place to carry the lateral load of the building. And so at this point, a shell kitchen is actually in the base drawing as a structural member for the building. But can also be eventually enclosed. And one of the things we're doing as an alternate is including prices for all the equipment to make it a kitchen. So that would be included in the alternate. The other drawing I want to show you while I'm up here at this point is a quick look at the interiors. A lot of work has been done. This particular drawing was done by the lighting consultant to try to look at how the lighting would take place. This is the east lobby or the west lobby, excuse me, basically looking in in this direction. This is the large windows that would look out towards the mountain. And that's their basic concept, which has some stone back walls on it, carpet floor, an expensive, nice-looking wood ceiling that is vaulted so that as you stand in there, it just gets bigger as you look out to where you can see the entire expanse of the mountains and take advantage of that. It's turned out very nice. We're still looking at final materials on the inside to come up with the absolute design The other thing I'd like to talk about also is the north parking lot. That's this drawing here. City engineer, engineers have put this drawing together. I think you received a letter a month or so ago from Center Court concerning the parking in this general location. Once we received that letter, we went back and looked at it. And when I actually went to the planning commission for their approval a couple of weeks ago, we had reconfigured this to where the head-in parking is no longer here. It's parallel parking and they now have a 20-foot landscape strip, which is what they were asking for, similar to what carries around this side of their project on the other parking lot. And that's the way it was approved by the planning commission. It took about 22 spaces out of the lot, but since the Prairie Spooner lots getting built, we think there's enough to compensate for that. And so this is the plan that was approved and it will be being bid as part of the package. Al, I'd like to take a couple of minutes to talk about cost.
Yes, sir. You're going off the handout then?
Yes.
Thank you. Get him okay? Any questions at this time? You all right?
Mr. Smoot? A quick rundown on cost. When you last saw this, looking at all the funds that could be generated, we were looking at having about $24.7 million available for actual construction. This did not include any potential increase that might come out of the November 3 TOT. This is strictly what's on the books today. We believe we can raise that kind of money for this project.
What's the November 3 TOT?
The, the election.
It'll be November 4th. Gee. I think many people in this room are sensitive to that date. Perhaps you should correct that on the document here.
Probably are. I apologize.
Thank you. I didn't know if there was something going on on the 3rd before the election I should be aware of. Okay?
It's a secret ballot.
Again, the election is November 4th. Don't go out on Monday, they're not ready for you.
At the design development estimate, which was in July, Turner Construction... We were looking at some very expensive light fixtures in the ballroom. They're removed. We've deleted some very expensive wood siding and ceilings in the ballroom to use still very nice interior, but to save dollars. That value engineering exercise, which took us a whole day, removed about $3.87 million from the project. It did not change the configuration of the building. It maintained everything that Jim needed. Then we went into a process of looking at some of the upgrades that we had included in the project, such as upgrading the restrooms, the corridors, additional air walls, and those kinds of things, and found about $2.2 million in those types of upgrades that could be removed from the project, a lot of which could actually be added back in the project very easily. If we wanted to upgrade carpet, we wanted to add an air wall, those kinds of things, we would actually have the structure in place for it, but we could make a last-minute decision to add those in. By doing all those things, we ended up with an overall estimate at that time of about $25.4 million with several other large items that the design team was looking at that we didn't have costs on as far as reducing costs, such as simplifying the overall structure. The steel structure is a very complicated structure, and they were working on simplification of that. Reducing lighting levels. Before that lighting study was done, they had something like 350 downlights in that particular lobby area. Now there are no downlights in there. Reduced an awful lot of that out there. We haven't taken those kind of costs into account yet. And there was a laundry list of those kinds of things the design team was to work on. So the information that I have to share with you today is I don't know the exact cost of this project. I can tell you that on November 15, we're going to get another estimate that will be a much more complete estimate, because at each day that passes, we get more information on the drawings, and things are much more complete. The design team last week, was it last week? Spent an entire day out here doing coordination and looking at the drawings, as well as actually physically being on-site and opening up holes in the walls and the ceilings and digging in manholes and everything else to try to work through things. We found lots of things, and it was a very good meeting, and we continue on with the process. Now, speaking of the process, the next thing I need to talk about is our schedule. And behind you on the wall there is one of my high-tech drawings. The top purple line being the original schedule that we started on 18 months ago or 12 months ago when we started the design process. And our plan was such that we had hoped that by December 1, we would have all of the bids in hand. And as you recall, we're doing this project as a construction management approach. It looks like right now we're going to have upwards of 60 trade contracts to bid separately on this project. And so that was the original plan, have them all in place by 12:01 so that we could start demolition. You would know what the entire cost of the project was, and you would sell bonds towards the end of December, and we would have Jim a building by the middle part of March. Since we began the design process, as all design processes happen, things slow up or we have problems in it or we have to make changes. The biggest change that we've had to make is when we got to design development, the recognition that we had to pull off that east area registration and that entire side of the building had to be completely redesigned. The structure itself is how the steel structure ties into the building. And it has set us back, and it's set us back to somewhere between a month and a month and a half. That added to two weeks that we had lost before that, and we could be as much as two months behind. That's not good for the schedule. The green line is the schedule that we are currently working on. And if you kind of walk down that line with me, the first item is Bid Package A. Bid Package A will go out on the street in the middle part of November. We are currently working on putting that together right now, and it is basically demolition, site grading, and dry and wet utilities on the site and in the street. That bid is, will be on the street, and will bid somewhere latter part of November. The second bid package, which is the steel, will be on the street in November and will be coming back to the council at that first meeting in December. The steel is an extremely long lead item on this project. We have 180-foot span steel trusses that have to be manufactured, and they're not down at Home Depot. And, or Lowe's, excuse me, Lowe's. Or Builder's Supply. So they're something that have to be bought early in the process. Currently, the schedule is such that we can still begin demolition on December 1 or actually December 6. And the reason that we keep focusing on that is a time period in which Jim's particular building schedule is such that when we do this demolition, we're not going to be in there with tiny little piece of equipment. We're going to be in there with big equipment, making lots of noise, and shaking the heck out of the building. And the window that we have to do that is the month of December. And so this schedule would say, okay, we would come back to council in early December, your first meeting in December, after the election, after we know what's happened with TOT. You would have Bid Package A and Bid Package B, and you would have Turner's up-to-date estimate, and that's all you would have. You would not have the rest of the bids. We would not be able to absolutely tell you what the project cost is. We'd be able to tell you what our best estimate is and try to manage it to keep it at that. And you can see in the schedule, Bid Schedule C would come in in the middle of December, and the major bids, the rest of the building itself, would come in in February with awards in the middle part of February, and you would sell bonds once you know the entire project cost. That particular schedule gets Jim the exhibit hall and the west end of the building, east end of the building, by February, the end of February to fit his schedule, and ends up with the completion latter part of April, first week of May. That is a schedule that we are currently working on, but it means that the council is going to have to make some tough decisions in December based on not complete information at that point. And I guess I'll stop talking at that point, and if you want to ask me what the alternatives are beyond that, I can show you that also, but I'd like to hear your questions or comments at this point.
Thank you, Al. Council questions? Mr. Mills, you've been tracking this thing relatively closely in your capacity. Any insight you want to add to this presentation at this time? Well, perhaps you could share insights.
I think I sat in on parts of most of the meetings, although I wasn't in on the last nine-and-a-half-hour one that I heard about, that I think created the 3.7 and the 2.2 reductions. I certainly feel that the team has researched this as much as it could possibly be researched. The building's been investigated as much as can reasonably be expected. There still will be things that happen, as there always is in remodels, that were not anticipated, which is why we're still carrying that contingency, correct? That 2.2?
We've got our construction contingency of $2 million, and they're carrying a design contingency right now of $1.4 million.
Okay. Which gives me a comfort level. I think it is extremely important, as Mr. Dunn, I'm sure, would be happy to comment on, that we do that demo during the month of December, because if we don't, it really, we miss a year. I mean, we just won't wait and start a year later. Is that basically right? Seven months?
Yep.
The, I think, in, we, meaning the council, will be relying heavily on the design team, which includes our contractors or construction managers, Turner, who we have a long history with, a long, successful history with. I am comfortable personally with taking the step that the council has to take here in order to make this happen on the schedule that's outlined. Outline Turner is, has a reputation of performing not just for us, but for all the entities that they work for, a very well-known company, worldwide company. And I have seen the detail that they've gone into on this, and the detail I know they will continue to go into on this. They have beat the architects up really badly. And they have stood their guns and their ground, and they have come up with something I think is acceptable, and I think it certainly works. I think that we are relying on the expertise we've hired and I think not to rely on that and not to go forward with this, even though we would all love to see that bottom line when we started. We would all love to. I think we have to go with the best information that we have now, and I am confident that that information will hold true.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Any other comments, questions, maybe concerns you might have? Mr. Dunn, how do you feel about what you're looking at tonight, schedule-wise, based on the sales that you've been doing recently and committing certain projects? Are you okay with the green line? What does it do to your business? Green line being the latter of these two timelines, this one here.
Right. The green line, again, we had always looked at a two-phase turnover with the exhibit hall portion turned over first and the ballroom flex space turned over secondly. With that, there are some impacts. We can probably mitigate some of those, but the reality is there are going to be some groups that may choose not to come because of that. The value of that in dollars is, in direct revenue, about $130,000, $60,000 in TOT and $3 million in spending in the community. That's the impact of the green line. Going beyond that, it gets significantly more, I guess, hurtful to all of us, but I think we can mitigate, as I said, some of the front end. We may be able to mitigate some of that. It's just hard until we know a schedule to go back to clients.
In the construction phasing of this thing, is the west end developed and delivered at a faster rate than the east end, or is it all complete at the same time?
The east end is faster.
The east end is faster?
The exhibit hall.
The big blocks. So it's the finish work of the pre-function space and the new entry and all the stonework that's going to lag behind?
Exactly.
One of the complexities, as Mr. Smoot illustrated in his first comments, there's no way to get in the building. We've surrounded it with construction, if not demolition, and it's going to be very difficult to feel welcome into a site where you're walking through construction. How are you addressing that? And how does our visitor, our conventioneer, our meeting guest feel as though he's not on a construction site too much?
We're looking at it in several aspects. First of all, we have to look at it from a safety point of view as far as proper exiting out of the building, and we're looking at ways to get people out to the north through the construction site for emergency exits. Part of the primary entrance to the building for a lot of the smaller conventions may very well be through the Wyndham Hotel, and Jim's talked with them about that, and I think there would be maps and those kinds of things to direct people through. We are looking at the area right adjacent to that outside area on the east side of developing an entrance that would bring people in from Caballeros, a very nicely decorated construction walk to bring people into that building. There will be a period of time, the first several months, that that parking, nothing will happen in that parking lot, because Jim's planning on putting some tents and some other things out there for some groups. But eventually, we will get into where you'll have to come through the Wyndham Hotel, or you will have to come through our construction walk coming off of Caballeros to get in there. Exiting, there may be some other ways to get people out, or there definitely will be in the event of an emergency. And, yes. And one of the things that is nice is with the Prairie Schooner parking lot moving ahead so quickly, it will be easy for us to have a place for folks to park over on that side and find their way through the Wyndham Hotel into the convention center if necessary. The other thing we're going to be asking is that Alvarado be closed for the duration of the construction project from the entrance to the condominiums that are there off of Alvarado to the north, all the way up to Amato Road, in order to help us with the construction process itself.
Okay, a couple of questions. You speak of Prairie Schooner now being a parking lot so that guests can go through the Wyndham to get to the convention center. Currently, there's not a physical link between. Do we develop that when we do the parking lot? Is there a way in which people will feel as though this is an adequate way to get from the two properties?
Part of the design that was done by the tribe was to provide for some accessways from the parking lot through the area that they're working on, and then we're going to have to look at the last little link as to what we do.
Pedestrian, not vehicular.
That's correct. Pedestrian, not vehicular.
On the issue of the tents that Mr. Smoot referred to on the east parking lot, are these overflow tents, or is this going to be the primary place that our visitors go because we can't give them the convention center?
Actually, we had a couple of groups.
These tents here, the east, yeah.
Right. We had a couple of groups that, when they met with us before, the tent was on the lawn. The lawn won't be there, so we had to move the tent to another location, and that's the available location for that. So it was an existing condition, if you will, and we just had to relocate them to another area.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills? I think along, when Jim was responding to your question about the schedule and the loss of time or loss of income, dollars, whatever, from the delay from purple to green, if we were not to go forward with this and we waited until we had the final numbers, which would push us conceivably seven months beyond, do you have an idea what the potential loss of dollars is to be seven months further back from where we would be if we were to be able to open seven months earlier from that date?
Just looking at the events that are booked now and would require the additional space, the impacts of that in local spending would be about $7.5 million, $200,000 in TOT roughly, and about $250,000 in direct revenue.
So a significantly greater difference.
It more than doubles.
Yeah.
And those are groups that are on the books. That's not recognizing any business that you forego because you simply don't have it available. That's what we would have to go back and either tell the group that it's not available and try to relocate them to another location, and that wouldn't be locally, so.
If I could also, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Since that got brought up, I unveiled the rest of the schedule. If you look at that red schedule on there, a 217 start or 218 start would be possible as far as getting all the bids in. That's the first date we would know the total cost of the project. However, reality tells us, there's no way on earth we can do demolition in February and March, because Jim's got the building full. So the first time we could actually start this project is the pink line, which gets us to the end of April or so. And you push this out 15 to 17 months, and we're into September, October of 2005 and really start to disrupt groups as well as marketing. And that's one of the reasons why we've been struggling so hard to find a schedule like the green schedule. That green schedule will mean that in November, on your November 19 meeting, we will be back here. here with a construction update for you as far as the cost goes, and that would be the night we would ask you to award contracts for demolition. The actual work would not start until that first weekend in December. We will also be on your October 15 agenda for you to approve plans and specs and administrative parameters and so on and so forth, so we can start the process. Harold Good and the construction management team are already in the process of pre-qualifying contractors for the first set of bids, and we will continue that process. We're going to be pre-qualifying most, all of the trades, to ensure that we get folks that not only know how to build buildings, but have built public occupancy buildings that are occupied, so that we get highly qualified contractors on it as part of our risk control that we're trying to put in place for you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills. Al, on your written schedule?
Yes, sir.
You're showing bid package A available on the 20th of November, I mean, 20th of October.
Mm-hmm.
That's correct, it's not, I mean, so that's out, that's when you're, so you're saying mid-October the council would approve that package, is that?
The, I mean, the package will go, the package will go out the 20th of October for bidders to start looking at it. We'll receive the bids on...
13.
The 13th.
Right.
Of November, and be on your 19th agenda for an award.
I'd agree, yeah. So the first decision, binding decision on this council, is going to be on the 15th of October, as far as the bid package goes.
The little plans and specs. That's correct. However, it's not, you don't reach a point of no return until we get to the demolition phase where you've actually awarded a contract, and then you actually don't until we give them the notice to proceed, quite frankly.
Gotcha. When do we commit to this deal?
We would have to commit to steel, which is bid package B, on 12/3, first meeting in December. And again, that early commitment, what we would, one of the ways that we could still try to minimize risk is ask council to award the contract, and however, only authorize us to pay for the shop drawings, which is the first eight weeks of process, to allow some more bids and those kinds of things to come in. I mean, we could go so far as to tear the front of the building off and then stop if we had to. I certainly wouldn't recommend that, but that is a stopgap there. But I think, hopefully, the team's going to be able to bring you a complete enough package to give you the comfort to be able to move forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills. Does Turner feel comfortable with, once A and B are bid, that that will kind of set a pace for the rest of the job? As far, I mean, and will it, in other words, if it comes in reasonable with budget, then would it be anticipated that the rest of the job would follow?
Well, you can never guarantee that, but I can, I can tell you that when you look at your last two projects that we carried the same approach on, which was the parking structure and Phase 1 convention center, some of the bids were a little higher, some of the bids were a little lower than the estimate. When it came right down to it, there was probably only a percent or percent and a half over the overall estimate that was there. The challenge that we are working hard on now is to make sure that we get plenty of pre-qualified contractors for this first set of bids, because one of the things that we told the design team was, we fully anticipate the council to say, "You estimated bid package A at so much money, and it came in at so much money, and we've told them if it's way the heck out of whack, we got big trouble." So we're fully cognizant and are working very, very hard on that, and I think they know that it's incumbent upon the entire team to come to you, and they will be here as part of that presentation that night to stand behind their estimate, to give you their best guess as to where we're going to end up at.
Scheduling. Where do you have any wiggle room? Where is it really tight? And do you have any intention in your bidding to do bonus penalty?
Currently, there is no wiggle room on the front end of this project. We're pushing everybody to the absolute max to make this schedule. I can't tell you there's an awful lot of wiggle room in the construction schedule either. One of the things that is very complicated is the steel on this project, and if you miss the window just slightly, you can be in big trouble with it. So we've had to build in a little bit of extra time to make sure we can cover ourselves on that. So there's, there is not an awful lot of leeway in the schedule. We have started talking about, we definitely have liquidated damages built in for some of the prime subs that could really mess things up if they don't perform. We are talking about the concept of early completion rewards of some sort or another. Within the team, we're talking about, is that something that we want to have in the bid documents, or is that something we want to come to council and get authority to use during the construction project? Because there's two different ways you can do this. You can announce it upfront, that if you finish 10 days early, you get 20,000 bucks or whatever, a percentage of your contract. Or the construction team can use it during the process that says, you know, when we get to a real tight spot, we can go to subcontractor A and say, "We really need you to move this thing ahead, and if you can complete your section a week ahead of when you said you are, we'll give you an extra percentage," or whatever. We have to think that all through to make sure that we can make it work, but we, right now, we're leaning towards the latter. We believe it'll give us more flexibility in dealing with the subs.
Well, I'd be interested in finding out what the recommendation of this group would be. We did bonus penalty downtown, we did the street, and we found tremendous reward in saving of time, which translated to much more convenience. In Jim's earlier illustrations, every day that we're not open is a financial burden, a loss, if you will. Now, there's a couple of things that I want to make sure that the city gets its revenue and that the convention center gets its revenue, and the hotels get their business, and we get all the taxes to come out of the sales and such. But also, if we're going to commit to an organization that we've been out working for and lobbying for and trying to lure here, and then we don't produce the date, that's a major bruise. Jim and I were on the phone this afternoon, this morning, trying to close one of the deals out of Hawaii, and, you know, we're dealing with the date sensitivity of these issues, not per se on today's call, but on a lot of these things we're going to sign. On the day of the groundbreaking, I understand we're going to have some signings of some contracts, which again are contingent upon a completion date. So again, I'm interested in knowing whether bonus penalty clause, or however you structure it, Mr. Smoot, you and your team, I think it's of great importance to just push this thing and let everyone understand that the sooner we get it, the better it is for everyone, and we'll reward that kind of performance. But on the other side, if you drag behind, it's a penalty, because it will cost us tremendously if we lose. Okay? Any other comments, questions? I got to tell you, this is not an easy job. It's complex in almost every facet. The team that's been working on this thing, not only those at the table, but everyone else who's attended these meetings, the architects who have worked so hard out of Denver, we've got a phenomenal product, absolutely phenomenal product, and I can only hope that we do have enough monies to do this corner piece here, because it would, it'd be difficult to come back at any point in the future and try to do just that. So if, you know, I'm not suggesting make it happen, but just letting you know that is very important for the completion, the continuity of the job. We're putting a lot of money into the resurfacing, the rebuilding, the re-identification. It's a whole new market, marketing brand, new icon, you even got new logos based on this building, and I think you got to complete it by getting that corner done, and that outside plaza is a fabulous asset for a myriad of uses. Parking being important, but secondary to what you offer here on this new design. So I wish you all the best. I appreciate you coming out tonight and briefing us on this. And it's real, you know, it's not like we have a, this is not a fantasy land, this has got some pretty strong implications to it, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we'd just like to leave you with, we think we have it under control. It is the largest construction project that you have ever undertaken in the history of your city, and I can probably tell you that because of the complete wraparound of it, it's going to be the most complicated project that you've ever undertaken as part of a city, and I think we'll deliver it for you, but it's going to take a lot of hard work.
Appreciate that, and thank you for your efforts thus far, gentlemen. Item three is design review. We'll turn again to Mr. Ready for his staff report on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. What's before you this evening is another component in our very serious and aggressive effort to make our entire planning, building, engineering, development service area as business-friendly as possible. One of the issues that had come up for some time was, as things go, bounce back and forth, and in theory, between the design review committee and planning commission, that hinders projects, that takes more time. We set out as one of the components to make us more business-friendly, to review the design review process. Mr. Mills was involved in that and gave us some very good insights, because as before he was on council, he was a user of that system for many, many years. And what we have before you this evening is what we think a process on design review does a couple of things. One, it will prevent, we believe, the projects going back and forth between design review and planning commission, and it will streamline the process. And with that, Doug Evans is going to give the outline of what that is, and is part and parcel of the design review process. There are some other issues in planning and in building and in engineering that are a part of this that we need to touch upon, so you'll have a better understanding of how we're developing the better business-friendly in conjunction with the design review. And with that, we have several other members of staff here. We will start at this point with Doug for the presentation on the design review. Thank you.
There's a couple more of the other ones that went the other direction. The, when we talk about what we do, it's a system. And typically, the system starts with the business development side, and it may be economic development, it may be planners, moves from planning to engineering to building, and everything that goes through the design review process, ultimately, we hand to engineering and building and say, "Build it." Private development, public development, streets and streetscapes. So when we take a look at this, what we want to do is, we're going to go very quickly in the first exhibit I'd like to walk through, is this exhibit here, starts with a very simple cover page, and I'd just like to show you an article that was in the public record yesterday. We are the tops in the valley for the month of August in building permit valuation. $23.5 million, followed by La Quinta Ranch and Mirage, Indian, Indian Wells, and so on. It has been a long time since we've been the tops in any month, and I think you're going to find that we're going to be competitive with other valley cities for some time to come with permit valuation, predominantly because of residential activity. If you turn the page, the next page is a draft architectural review ordinance. This is my sixth revision to it. We've workshop this with the city manager's office, with the planning commission, with a council member that's been active in this. This ordinance basically takes our existing ordinance in legislative draft form and makes some changes to the process that we presented back to you, I believe, in May. So it's actually the draft ordinance. We will go to planning commission and design review in a workshop next Wednesday to start their final review of this. We'll ask the city attorney to look at it, and we'll also try to get some community input into it. Basically, the system is fairly simple to set up and describe, and I'm not going to go through each page. It's way too much information to try to ask the council to look at each day. It would be a planning commission-appointed body, it would be a planning commission architectural advisory committee, have one planning commission member, seven members, they're all professionally-based. The feeling was that this needs to be a professional design program, with a professional recommendation to the planning commission or the staff.
And Doug, this is currently where in the process? Is this before the planning commission, this sixth draft?
This draft, we're bringing it to you first.
Okay.
Goes to planning commission next Wednesday for a workshop, and if they're comfortable, when we get the city attorney comments, we're going to public hearing for the planning commission and back to council. But this is the first time we've actually formatted everything into an ordinance that everybody can see what we're going to strike out, what we're going to add in. But if I could, I'll just go through it very quickly. On page three, we basically set the format of the committee up. On page four, we just clarify some of the language, changed the language, not a real substantial change. Page five, we've revised how we refer to hillside developments, and I'll get to what that means in a moment. Page six, for the first time, we've actually defined what the staff can approve. If you recall, we had some complaints that the staff had too much authority, they weren't sure where we got the authority, and we basically said, "Here's what the staff can approve. Here's the appeal process for a staff approval." We probably want to consider whether or not there should be a minor appeal fee for staff decisions. Currently, we kind of do that informally without a fee, but there could be a new fee in that location. On page seven, basically, item C at the top, talks about the planning commission basically reviews everything that the staff doesn't approve, and that if it's a by right-of-zone project, we start looking at consent calendars for the planning commission. On page, bottom of page seven, we start talking about, you know, by right-of-zone development, that means if you can build that building, you don't need a conditional use permit, plan development district or subdivision, we're going to get those to the planning commission within 45 days of a complete application. I can tell you right now, we normally beat the heck out of that, and we get them there sometimes within a week or two. Once we get a complete application, normally, we're ready to go.
Good.
Number five, really starts to talk about some of the changes that are pretty, a little bit more substantial. Architectural approval applications that require a conditional use permit or plan development district or subdivision map require a public hearing. In this case, we're adding in, if the project is not exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and we have to prepare an environmental assessment, for those applications, we would require a public hearing, where we don't today. I can tell you, if we look at all the projects up on the board, and, you know, how many we, architectural approval applications we did, so far, 515 this year, only a couple would have to have a public hearing. And the reason we believe you have to do that is, one, we have to publish the environmental document in the newspaper, and if we hide it in the newspaper and don't inform the neighbors, we've essentially done an environmental review without a lot of public input. So I think while we're adding a little bit more regulation for a few projects, it's good for the public. Really, if you want a legal position, you have to do it. You really have to notify people when we're doing environmental assessments on a by right-of-zone project, so that process would be the same as a conditional use permit, and again, I don't think it's going to affect more than a few projects per year. Item 5B really just starts describing our process a little bit more. That's what we do today. So we just described what we do under the current ordinance, first time we've actually laid it out where somebody can follow it through. Item, on page nine, item six, very minor change about occupancy permits and whose conditions of approval have to be complied with. We added everybody. Item seven, we propose that we actually codify that the planning commission and planning commission architectural advisory committee agendas be distributed to the designated neighborhood representatives, and we have a list of those, we're currently doing it. We're going to just say in the ordinance, we're going to keep doing it. So it becomes code of the city, policy of the city, to get those agendas out to the various neighborhood representative groups, and we work with ONIP and LEED to define that. The rest of the changes are fairly minor, the exception of number 10 that I put in to make sure the city attorney is awake tonight. On page 10, item H at the bottom, for many, many years, this city's practice has been to give people some leeway if they forget that their permit expired. And we've granted retroactive time extensions for many, many years, but it's not in our code, it's not there. But the commission and council has done that for many years, and it's a pretty common practice. For architectural approval applications, we're suggesting, we put it in the code, and we might have to refine it a little bit, but at least allow people that forget that their architectural approval application is going to expire, that they get six months to figure that out for cause. for cause. That is the architectural approval ordinance. And going through that, on page twelve, we get into the hillside development issue, and whether or not the city should provide notice to adjoining property owners that a hillside development may occur. Currently, we provide a courtesy notice, it's not written anywhere, we just do it. And what we've done is, we've said on page twelve, item B, that we will now have to give a courtesy notice when the application comes in, so the neighbors know right away, and it's the abiding neighbors, the adjoining neighbors, not everybody in the neighborhood. Item C basically says, before an application can be approved, that we give a ten-day notice to those neighbors, again, a courtesy, but there's a public meeting, it's not a public hearing notice. Item D basically says, if the commission runs into controversy, they can set it for a public hearing, or if I know it's going to be controversial, and I know usually it's going to be controversial because my phone's ringing off the hook, then I can set it for a public hearing and avoid another step in there. We really feel we probably need to do that, we're getting into some tough situation with neighborhoods and hillside development. And when the building is framed, it's really too late to tell people, somebody's got a permit. Item two on that page, lower down, really talks about what staff can approve in hillside areas, buildings up to square, or additions up to four hundred square feet, building heights not increased, no substantial grading, no substantial change to the appearance. And then, again, a appeal process for what the director or staff can approve. Those are the changes that we think start to meet not only the commission's concerns, council's concerns, community concerns, going back to some complaints that the staff had too much authority, and nobody could figure out what our differentiation was between a commission or a staff review item. We're going to workshop that, we'd encourage the council members to take a look at this. If you have any individual comments, let us know, and we will keep you posted as we go through the community input process. But it's taken a little time to do this, I wish I would have done it in about June, but we had a few projects we worked on this summer, we didn't take much of a vacation. So if there's any questions on that, I'd like to just keep moving along and kind of go through the points that we've laid out. Any questions on the actual ordinance at this point?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Doug, on six, page six, under B on that page, staff action appeals. When you say "appeal to the Planning Commission," that is to the process, which would mean to architectural review and planning commission, is that, when you say, I mean, is that what's intended?
Well, in most cases, if something's substantial, we're going to run it by Design Review or Architectural Review as part of the staff approval process. We're going to consult with them.
There's nothing in here that says you're going to do that, though?
We can certainly go back in and put that through. I think there's a reference to it, that we may or may not take those things to
Well, I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting by any means that we make you do that. What I'm suggesting is that, if there's an appeal of your action, and say it did not involve architectural review...
It's going to go up through the process.
Which would mean architectural review, planning commission, like, okay, that's really all I'm asking.
Most of the staff approvals, we're not going to get appeals on, because they're pretty minor, unless it's a color, and we say no to, you know, chartreuse, pink, green, and purple on one building, and we get some pretty wild colors that we just are going to say no to. And those would go up through the process, not too many staff decisions are appealed. It's usually something that we know that the commission wouldn't approve also. To kind of move on, and we originally had this in a PowerPoint-type presentation, and items, or page sixteen, if you just want to see where decisions are made, whose advisory, where the appeals are, decisions are checks, eyeglasses are advisory, and unhappy faces are appeals. Eventually, we'll add that to the code, probably a little bit more formal, where people can see the process, but we won't do that this-go-round, there's no real good place to put it. But that gives you an idea where the decision's made, where's the review, and then where do the appeals occur. And, yeah, Jing had some fun with that one. The next page is one that I always will bring to you, it deals with the myths of what occurs. This is our Planning Commission activity, calendar year to date, one hundred and seven approved projects, there were six denied projects, one of which was appealed to council. There were two re-studies, just occurred recently. And in fact, one of those re-studies was approved today, the second meeting, so that project is now approved. So if you take a look at where we were last year versus this year, the same point in time, we had one hundred and seven projects before the Planning Commission, this year we had one hundred and fifteen. So we're at a pretty good pace this year. And if you just go to the next page, on eighteen, it gives you a bar chart of that for the past two years, and you can see that the commission approves almost everything. And they don't re-study very often. Two thousand and one, three re-studies, two thousand and two, three re-studies, two thousand, two thousand and two, three re-studies, and two thousand and three, we had two so far, year to date. We've, what we've done, before the ordinance even comes forward, we've talked to the Planning Commission and Design Review about consistency and not referring people back and forth. And I think commissioners look very hard before they deny or re-study something, as to whether or not it's a community issue or a design issue. And they try to stay out of design as much as they can. So it's a change of mindset, the code hasn't even gotten there yet. And that's what we've been trying to do, even though it hasn't been codified. The segue on this, off this one, Troy, do you want to make a quick introduction, or you want me to move right along to the next packet of information? I want to talk to you in numbers. You know, what this does is sets the plate, and tells us how we're going to set the plate, and how we're going to make decisions. The next bit of information talks to you about the facts of how busy we are. We're swamped. I couldn't tell you any more bluntly than we are swamped. Dave has problems managing the projects and the volume, Don does, I do, my staff does, we can't, some days even assign people to return all the phone calls that are coming in on any one day, it's that busy right now. In this packet, the first nine pages, and I'm not going to go through it, are all of the projects that we're currently working on at Development Committee. That's engineering, planning, and building. Ranges from architectural approval, to maps, to conditional use permits. It's nine pages of projects, there's forty-one current applications that we're working on that have not gone to the Planning Commission. There's eighteen pre-applications, which means we're working with developers, they have not chosen to submit an application yet, but we expect that they will. And then the planners have thirty-one projects that are in plan check that they're working on. That's a lot of work. Development Committee starts Tuesday morning at eight-thirty, some days at noon. We haven't even cracked this agenda, and we work very hard to try to push projects through.
And I might add, it's mind-numbing, if you've ever gone to a development review committee, as I have for the last couple of months, it just is incredible, the amount of work that these three departments are doing.
You've got to go fast, you've got to move quick, and sometimes, we're throwing plans on top of plans to try to get people focused. It's a lot of work. The good news is, I'm confident to tell you that I think eighty percent of the stuff on this list is likely to get built.
Wow.
Because if you looked at this list last year, they're the building permits that Don's issuing this year to be number one in the valley. You know, so everything starts here, goes to engineering, and goes to Don. So if you want to amp this up and take care of the business, it's a system, it's not one individual department. Going to page ten, I'll just talk numbers very quickly, I put some of the exhibits up on the board, so you could take a quick look, if you're in the audience. But again, I'm just going to go to the column on the bottom right. Two thousand and three, year-to-date, calendar year, we're at seven hundred and eight discretionary permits, that's where we had to think them through and write a report, or take them to the Planning Commission. Last year, for the entire year, we're at six hundred and sixty-four. The previous year, we were at eight eighty-five, and you can see that was our high. This trend line started in nineteen ninety-six, and it's just going like a rocket. And the large exhibit on the right, if you then were to throw in all permits on the next page, I won't even talk about that, but go to page twelve, take a look at all permits. Now, we're loading in the easy stuff, garage sales, things of that nature. We still have some data collection, so it's not complete. Right now, all permits out of planning, we're at one thousand and one. If we project just finishing up the year at the same pace, we'll be at thirteen hundred and thirty-five. Last year was our highest year at thirteen hundred and sixty-nine. The fourth quarter is our busiest year, we're going to do a lot of signed permits, we're going to probably exceed last year. But I didn't want to predict it, I just wanted to trend it out. I'm going to take a rest, and Don's going to tell you about the good news. This is the cash register side of all this work. Don?
Cash register side, yes. As of August of this year, comparison to last calendar year, we are up over fifty million dollars in valuations. As you can see, the totals of the calendar year of last year, seventy-four million, we've already taken in a hundred and four million, and we've still got four or five months left in the year. So that's a tremendous activity, and as Mr. Evans pointed out, his projects eventually wind up at my counter to get permits, and they will get built. On the next page, fourteen, you see the number of projects we've got in plan check, a hundred and fifty right now, different stages of plan check. There's a list there, some of the major projects that are in, medical buildings. If you total these up, you've got a hundred and fifty condominiums, eighty-six single-family dwellings, and sixty-six apartments that just came in, it's Coyote Run Two. Down below, we've got our major projects that are under construction at this time, in different phases. If you total those up, you're looking at five hundred and sixteen new single-family dwellings, a hundred and four apartment units, twenty-four condos, and sixty-six timeshares, not to mention all the small additions, remodels, TIs, and so forth throughout the city. We also have, which you don't see there, there's three six thousand-plus-square-foot dwellings under construction in Andreas Hills. And that's just a short brief of my end of it.
And I want to add that Don and his department does this all with two permit technicians and one plans examiner, in addition to some contract support staff, but he does an amazing amount of work with the limited resources he has, and as you can see, the workload is not lightening up anytime soon, so there's a lot of work in the hopper for his small amount of staff that he does have.
If we could shift just quickly on item, or page fifteen, what we wanted to do was, was show you the long-range planning activities, and this is my position, that the city of Highland hired one of their former employees back as planning director, Larry Left, and this is pretty much his workload that's sitting on his desk right now, until we make some decisions on how we refill. I'm just going to touch on a couple of the items that I'm very proud of. The general plan update, we've got a great twenty-three-member steering committee, they're hungry for information, they want to work, and they've been doing a great job. And we're meeting tomorrow afternoon, and we've got a whole new team now that has to go and really start working with them, of other staff members. Geographic information systems, put your new general plan map up on the left. It's the first digitized general plan map of the city. I know David has always been concerned that GIS never works. That's printable today, it's not finished yet, we're still rectifying some data. The one on the right is the old general plan, hand-drawn, and again, you can come in now and ask for maps from us, and the maps on the upper right are maps that are coming out of the GIS system that we're using today. We've got aerial photography, we've got the county land use system in, they're parcel systems, so there's a lot of information. We're doing that with existing staff. Most cities, including the tribe, have their own GIS operator, so we're trying to work this in, and we've got some really talented staff members that can do GIS almost in their spare time. Section fourteen, master plan, housing element, we're finishing up, and a number of other things that we're trying to work, including a few little roadway projects that Dave Barakian has us work on, on page sixteen, having to do with Indian Avenue and Gene Autry. A lot of environmental documents and engineering support that we're trying to give to Dave in reviewing those projects.
Still stiff projects, by the way.
Item seventeen, or page seventeen, every time we talk to you about how busy we are and what we're doing, there's going to be members of the community that are going to say, "But such-and-such city does it with X amount of staff," and what we wanted to do is just show you what everybody has in the valley right now, so you can look at that. And we called today, some of the cities reorganized in the last month or so, so you can get an idea. We currently have the largest planning staff in the valley, but I can tell you that we're the busiest planning staff in the valley, and we have programs that the other cities don't even have, that we've been doing for years. So I just provide that as background. Things that we do that other cities don't, I told myself I would only tell you about ten on page nineteen, and I won't go through most of them. Office of Neighborhood Involvement, Public Participation, this year, we have either already had, or have scheduled, twelve community meetings on development projects. Now, what does that mean? In some cases, we send out as many as four hundred notices to a meeting that's not legally required. That means we look up the ownership information, we prepare the notice, we stuff the envelopes, and more importantly, we get a lot of phone calls when we do that. So we've done that ten times, in addition to all the traditional public hearing notices that we send out. Historic preservation, we've got a great survey underway, two hundred property owners were notified that we've looked at their property. My staff's been working, and you'd be amazed at what their activity level, just on that survey, has been in the last week and a half. Nobody has the involvement in, with a tribal relationship like the city of Palm Springs, and our land use ordinance, and the number of things that we're doing as partnership, or in conjunction with the tribe, and I listed a few. We're the only city with an airport. We don't do all the airport functions, but we have to do the land use planning around the airport, we have to be knowledgeable about airports, that's a training issue, because we have never hired a planner that knows what an airport is because of experience, other than traveling. They've never planned around an airport. Downtown's a bit different, seasonal population, we've got a lot of environmental litigation, that creamed my time schedule this summer with requests for information. And then we do wind energy, and nobody else does that in the Coachella Valley. So we've got to have people that can do a lot of different things. Those things set us aside in programs that other cities haven't had to do or don't do. And with that, Troy, you want to talk about fees a little bit?
Sure. As part of the recommendations that came out of the Development Task Force, in addition to Design Review being added as a item that the task force felt was very necessary, the task force also felt that the city should take a closer examination of its permit fees. As you know, the city has retained a company, UniFinancial, to analyze our permit fees in all three of our development services departments. That study is currently underway, and is not expected to be completed for another sixty to ninety days. You may recall that last Friday, in the Desert Sun, the city of Indio recently announced that they had gone through a similar fee study, and they are raising fees across the board. In some cases, fees are going up from four hundred to five hundred and thirty-six percent, depending on the type of fee. They're estimating that the new fees that they're going to be implementing effective October first are going to generate an additional eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to the city coffers. In talking to the consultant earlier this week, they indicated that in two recent fee studies they did for the city of Modesto in Northern California, and the city of Kingsburg, they saw fee increases ranging from two hundred percent to four hundred percent in all fee categories. In relationship to Palm Springs, at this particular juncture, they're indicating that we could see a we could see a twenty percent increase in permit fees for the building department and upwards of a sixty percent increase in permit fees for the building and, or excuse me, the planning and engineering departments. What does that mean to the city of Palm Springs? Well, if you turn to page twenty-one, if we look at a twenty percent increase in building permit fees, we're looking at an additional two hundred and nine thousand dollars annually that'll be generated. If we look at a sixty percent increase in planning and engineering-related fees, you're looking at five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars that will be generated for a combined total of seven hundred and fifty-six thousand and twenty-eight dollars that would come into the city's general fund.
And if I could add in here, traditionally, for years and years and years, the city of Palm Springs' general fund has subsidized the whole development services program. What this does, and, and because our, our permit, our fees were artificially low, and there was good policy reasons for that for a lot of years, but now with the state and local budgets becoming as they are, what this allows us to do is to actually pass that cost along and to use our general fund dollars for more of the traditional things of police and fire and things of that nature. So that is one of the reasons why we're doing the study, and the importance that we need you to see, that what that can generate for us, which would save the general fund.
So why is that seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars important? Well, it's important for several reasons. One is, the city manager indicated, it helps offset the city's costs that are currently being subsidized by the general fund, but more importantly, it now gives the city some flexibility with respect to additional positions that are necessary to augment the resources that we presently have in our development services departments. As Doug had outlined in his presentation, we are definitely facing a very large amount of work right now, and we have very limited resources, and one of the ideas that came out of the Development Task Force was to assist the development services departments with some additional staffing. We presented that to the city council during the budget adoption process for the current fiscal year, and some of those positions were authorized, several, several were not, based on the fact that we were gonna be going through a fee study, and that as a result of that fee study, there may be some additional flexibility to hire these positions. I think we've come to a critical juncture now with the departure of, of Doug's senior planner, principal planner position, and the fact that there is sufficient amount of work that is coming into the department that necessitates additional resources. Certainly, we could look at augmenting our, our staff through contract services, but contract services are quite costly. If you look at the cost-effectiveness of hiring a planning consultant, or a engineering consultant, or a building inspector, the cost comparison to that of a full-time staff person is just not there. So what we're presenting tonight to council on page twenty-two are some position recommendations that we would like to make to the city council to help augment the, the staffing in those three departments. In the first area for building, we certainly have recommended, and the Development Task Force has also suggested, that a plans examiner is necessary. We were suggesting that a plans examiner be hired at a cost of seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars, fully benefited. In the planning department...
Before I go on, would you cite again, Don, the number of plans to be examined currently? And we only have one plan, one...
A hundred and fifty are in-house right now.
And you only have one plan checker, and that's why the, the need for two?
We do have a hundred and fifty plan checks in, in-house right now, currently, most of which are gone out to outside contractor, because obviously, with one plans examiner, we cannot meet the demand.
And that was one of the major concerns of the Development Task Force, is that we're able to do more plans in-house. Thank you.
And I might add that that current plans examiner is spending a significant portion of his time reviewing the plans for planning purposes in the non-planning review areas, and Don, you may wanna elaborate a little about that and why that's taking so much of that individual's time.
That's correct. The non-review areas are not, they do not go through the planning department, so all the planning and zoning requirements are done by the building department. Building heights, setbacks, detached, detached, and also, we do the routing. If we have to determine the size of the area, if it's more than forty percent, we've gotta send it to engineering. And we also send out to the outside contractors, they have to be screened before they go out and checked again when they come back in, and there's a lot of delay, and it puts us way behind on our plan check process, and one man cannot do it all.
Mr. Reddy, could I ask you, would you have staff address the concept of bringing someone in-house with a cost versus the cost attributed to the workload they can carry that would be paid out for a contract? If you put somebody to take care of the work, then obviously, it's not going out anymore, but we're paying somebody else to do the work. We're not gonna pay a personnel, a member of our permanent staff to do it. Can you give me some kind of report as to what that looks like?
I can give, and to bring in an outside plans examiner into the city to do plan checks, the best rate I've got was seventy dollars an hour, which equates to, if you add it up, about a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year.
So what you're asking for here in the plans examiner is a total benefit package in salary of seventy, seventy-eight thousand, roughly half, for the same workload, and perhaps a greater turnaround because he's only, he or she's only devoted to our work?
Most of the work could be kept in-house, and the turnaround time would, would reduce as well.
Yes, going to significantly reduce the amount of time between the time we send the plans out, the time that it's reviewed by the outside consultant, and returned back to city staff for final processing. So an in-house person certainly is going to speed up the review process, and I know as some of the individuals who use our building, plan, or building and planning departments know, that that outside process can add additional time to the overall review. If it's done in-house, it will expedite that, and the plant, the Development Task Force felt that that was an important consideration to improve our customer service and our business friendly nature.
All right, here's the next question. Let's assume Mr. Oden is a developer in our city who generates enough work for plan check that equates to a hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of outside contract service. And what you, and now it means he's paying a hundred and forty thousand dollars to the city to pay for that service. Now, you're saying, hire someone in-house to do that same workload for seventy-eight thousand dollars. Do we save money? Do we make money? What happened just there? Okay, 'cause I'm gonna pay a hundred and forty to the out-of-house person, now I got somebody in-house, I'm paying half. Did we just make money? Or do, what?
We would make money, yes.
Okay.
To give you an idea...
Which could then translate into additional staffing to do more work, to help generate faster turnaround in that business-friendly scenario. Is that correct?
Yes, and to give you an idea...
So it's cost-effective?
Right. Just to give you an idea, the fiscal year two thousand two to two thousand three, we paid our outside consultant in San Diego a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
But I, I think, you know, having watched the building department for a while, you're gonna, if you had an in-house plan checker, we're still gonna have to send some projects out to Eskil.
Certain size, complicated, yep, yep.
Or somebody says, I want a faster turnaround, and that's the one service that Eskil can really provide on new buildings.
I wanna go back in history a little bit, 'cause when we were at a different stage of development, a little slower, a little easier, we were afraid and reluctant to hire someone full-time, 'cause it wasn't full-time work, so we did contracts to keep our costs down. Didn't wanna put somebody on full-time, 'cause it didn't justify the workload. Now, you're at a different cycle, as evidenced by all the reports you've given us thus far, you've got the workload that the in-house makes sense. This is kinda like the jail, when it's profitable to the outside and you outsource it, and then it's time to bring it back in again. Is it time to bring it in again? Based on what your recommendation is, your projections, perhaps?
Yes, I project that this construction is gonna continue two to five years at least, at this rate.
Ooh, how you like that?
Well, if I could just add to that, and why Don says two to five years, he's working on, what, about six hundred units right now in the, in the building permit, plan check process, and, you know, on the planning side, we're working on about four thousand right now, so they're coming.
And they will be coming to the building department.
And, you know, what, what, you know, people get concerned, if we add those number of units, what's gonna happen? Well, we've had these booms before, and it's still a pretty nice place to live. What it does mean is the retailers now will look at Palm Springs, whereas before they would not. And we're looking at Big Box, and I can tell you that when I went through statistics about residential construction with a downtown developer, and they realized how many new rooftops we might have, his whole perception of Palm, Palm Springs changed in about one minute.
So, in, in the world of statistical analysis, when you say four hundred, excuse me, four thousand new rooftops, new homes, what's the number we use in equating residents per house? Is it two point two? What's the number? Two? Just simply two, generically? So it's eight thousand new people, whether they're permanent or temporary visitors, potentially another eight thousand people in town?
And, and, you know, keep in mind, our growth rate was projected that we should grow at about four to five percent. In our nineteen ninety-three general plan, we didn't, we grew at about one percent per year, and we're gonna have a little catch-up period.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna, you know, slow down, it goes like this, you know, you don't get your growth perfect, you know, it'd be wonderful if we grew like that, it doesn't work that way in, in Palm Springs or many other places. We, we grow like this, and we're in one of those, one of those bumps.
On the upside.
And I think we're getting pretty good quality development.
So what's the recommendation at this point to then hire someone as a permanent plan examiner?
Correct, and that would be the same recommendation that's coming out of the Development Task Force.
Okay.
The next area is the planning department, and one of the critical positions there that both the planning task force and the staff is making a recommendation for now is the planning manager. This particular person would essentially provide the day, for day-to-day operations of the planning department, thus freeing up the director of planning and zoning to focus more on the strategic planning aspect of planning services. This would also provide direct guidance of, over the assistant and associate planners, as well as the planning technicians, and provide more of a direct connection for those who are processing plans, so that the director can focus more in, more on the long-range planning goals of the department. And the cost, fully loaded, for that position is a hundred and thirty thousand and fifty dollars on the high end. The next position is actually a reclass of a current position, and that is the associate planner. What we'd like to do there is actually downgrade that position to an assistant planner at a lesser cost. You can see the price there is at seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars with salary and benefits. Those two positions combined, roughly two hundred thousand dollars in the planning department. Doug, is there anything more you wanna add to planning?
No. No, just, just so if somebody's out there and, and they're wondering about a downgrade position, we do have an opening in the, in the department, and depending on what we hear tonight, we'll probably do an internal recruitment for the principal planner position, so the downgraded position will be an open position, not a filled position.
And I would also add that the request for this additional assistant planner, primarily, from my perspective, it is going to eliminate that long wait at the counter for people coming in, because it helps us to address them on a more quicker basis, they don't have to wait, and when we get our concierge service in, this will all blend together to make the experience in the planning department easy for those people who are coming even for the first time, and that's why the additional personnel, I believe, is very much required.
The, the final piece of the puzzle is in the engineering department, this is actually being driven by a regional requirement. As you know, the Coachella Valley almost lost its attainment status for PM-10 purposes. SEVAG has recently adopted a model PM-10 ordinance, and they're asking all the cities in the Coachella Valley to adopt such an ordinance. As part of that, there's gonna be new, not only requirements imposed upon the building and engineering departments to ensure that projects are not kicking up PM-10, but also to make sure that they're being monitored, so that there's enforcement if a project should violate the PM-10 standards.
Monitor by each jurisdiction or monitor by AQMD?
I, I believe there's a, a requirement on both parts, but I was gonna have David Barakian not only talk about the new requirements that this is gonna impose, but the need for staffing that it's going to entail, because one of the areas that we wanna look at is hiring a field technician who will do the PM-10 monitoring, as well as assist the engineering department in the grading aspect of, of engineering. So David, if you wanna talk about the PM-10 requirements?
Sure. Monitored by each indivi... monitored by each individual agency. There's actually a, a section of the, of the proposed memorandum of understanding that SEVAG and with AQMD is, is requesting that the cities adopt the, next month, and it will be before you, second meeting in October, that, that requires that the city assign a staff member with a single responsibility of determining compliance with the dust ordinance. Now, it's not a, it's not a hard mandate, because there, there is an option, but it is basically very strongly urged by AQMD as part of the state implementation plan, that the cities have somebody or some group of people assigned to monitor dust, and this is, this is all part of the package because the valley is, is in non-attainment status.
Yes.
This is all part of the package to prove to the federal EPA that we are serious about getting back into attainment, and the way we do that is we enact ordinances, and we, we, we show that we are enforcing those ordinances.
You, you speak of a single responsibility, this is all this individual does?
Well...
Is that the, that, I mean, that's a string, sort of a strict interpretation. You, you can't split this person's work with other tasks?
No, this, this position that we're proposing actually would be working with, in the engineering department to do grading, working on engineering plans, as well as doing dust control plans. So this position is going to be doing many different jobs within the engineering department, it's not gonna be solely assigned to dust control and dust inspection.
A mandate that's not funded, a mandate that we fund.
It is a mandate that's not funded.
Right.
But it, the requirement is that there be a person who is, who, whose responsibility is that dust control, is that monitoring of the dust plans. It is not, if, it is not their only responsibility.
Thank you.
But they are, it would be their only responsibility if there was enough dust control work for a full-time person. Currently projected in Palm Springs, that person would also be able to do grading inspection, currently tasked to the building department, but currently, because of explanations just given, not being able to be handled by the, 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 the five building inspectors.
PM-10 non-attainment's extremely important, without it, we lose federal funding across the board.
It is.
And building stops all over the place.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's, it's over. This boom is over, not by any, any control that we put in place. Doug?
The, the added benefit of having this, this dust inspector, because that, that does sound like, you know, what, what kind of work is that? When you really get in, I mean, it, it, you know, it's one of those ones that you can smile at, and the public might not understand very well unless you've been involved in, in the dust.
I find it real serious on, on a broader scope than our own city, I assure you.
The other, the other benefit of this position is currently grading inspection on private property, falls through the cracks. The planners approve the grading plan aesthetically, engineering makes sure that the water works and that it's engineered properly. The building inspector typically is a building inspector, not a grading inspector, and I can tell you, by the time some of the projects have been destroyed by the grading contractor, some of the things we try to achieve with our architectural approval ordinance is done, it's over with, it's wrecked, by the time you can stop it. And by having a grading inspector, they would be responsible for dust, engineering practices, and making sure that the grading onsite matches what the grading plan says. We've had subdivisions constructed with no homes on them, where they were graded per the plan, nobody went out and inspected the grading, and we found out, because there wasn't good match lines on the plan, that we had three-foot fill slopes going into people's wood fences. And nobody stopped it, nobody looked at it, because you couldn't see it from the street, and nobody inspected the back line of the grading. One example, but I can give you others, and it will also help us with our cultural resource monitoring, to have a grading inspector to keep developers on the right site. We've had people go in and grade the whole neighborhood by supposed accident with an inspector, we could probably control that, and, believe me, if we could keep the developers on their own site, it would eliminate a lot of problems in the field, and...
I wanna get a staff read on PM-10 non-attainment and the full implication of the loss of federal funding across the board, and what would happen?
Potentially, what would happen, or what could happen, is if the federal government, the Environmental Protection Agency determined that it was necessary, they could do what I believe in, in the Phoenix area...
Atlanta.
...occurred, yeah, yeah. They, they could potentially come in and say, okay, you're not going to, you're not going to monitor the Clean Air Act, then we're going to, 'cause you don't have enough money, or you don't have enough time, and we're going to come in here, we're gonna take the federal money you were going to get for roads or bridges or whatever, and we're gonna use that money, and we're gonna make sure you meet the requirements of the Clean Air Act. Therefore, building stops, road building stops, and you're doing nothing but having the federal Environmental Protection Agency running... running your, your air, air monitoring program.
The scenario is explained is that, that the feds show up, and it's the classic case, hi, I'm from the federal government, I'm here to help you, and they take over. And you have no controls over development or building or roads or transportation. All the monies that would come to all those projects are now forced to mitigate based on the attainment issue. And they, they just make that the only priority, not the first or second. It's the only priority. And everything we've got going on right now, all this great reports, stops. And there's nothing we have any power over, we sit back and we're told what to do if we even know what's going on. So this whole dust thing, from my standpoint, I've been trying to get this, at least broaden on, on a broader scope in, in five counties, this is huge. This can stop Southern California, let alone our own area. And we've got a problem out here that's not really ours, if you will, the Palm Springs, but because we're in a, in a geographic stamp assigned to a certain area, certain jurisdictions are not as good as we are, but their failure still becomes our problem. And that's why we keep on pushing on the regional front to take care of these issues. So if you see dust, traditionally, you call AQMD, or you call the building and planning department, and they send somebody out to mitigate. It's essential. This whole thing could just stop.
The, the other thing we are going to, you know, we have one golf course under construction right now. We may have another one in, in the future. We may have another one right after it. And, you know, I can tell you that building inspectors aren't going to watch a golf course, and the planners aren't going to have time to go watch it.
Okay. And I just wondered, and I looked at staff for the recommendation, hiring one person to do all the dust inspection when you've got so many project sites going on, it may be someone's halftime, halftime, or four people at quarter time, they're assigned so that there's more eyes out in the field. Because there's a lot going on right now.
Well, I believe Mr. Barakken can comment on the requirement that all building inspectors are also have to be certified in dust control measures. So that will be a requirement as well. In addition to the monies that we anticipate will be generated from the increase in permit revenues, the PM-10 model ordinance that C-VAG is going to be requesting that we adopt, I believe, has some funding mechanisms in it as well to recover permit fees for dust control, dust mitigation. In addition, I know David Barakken has identified some additional sources of funding that potentially can be used to pay for this dust control technician, and I'd have David speak to that.
Yeah, the, the main source would be, as a, as a part of development impact fees, but in addition to that, a couple of ideas that were raised at C-VAG and, and one that we came up with here. One of, one of the ideas was a, on grading plans or on dust plans is like a, a, a surcharge for each one to help pay for the, for the dust monitor because of the fact we're in non-attainment. And that, that surcharge would last until we were back in attainment. And, and if the surcharge, we've, we estimated that a surcharge averaged two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, less for smaller grading and dust plans, more for larger ones. That could conceivably come up to ten, to ten thousand dollars. And, and the other item is that it is eligible for CSA 152 funds.
So you have those, the four positions that we're recommending, the total, actually, it's actually a net three positions because we're reclassing one of those positions. So the total cost first year is estimated at two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. Obviously, that's a large number, and we feel that the council has given us direction in the past that they wanted to wait for the user, or the permit fee study to come back. However, based on our preliminary analysis, we believe that that user fee study is going to show a significant increase in those fees is possible, which, if the city council does approve, will ultimately offset these costs. The question is, are we in a position to wait for that fee study to be completed, which is another sixty to ninety days? Or can we seek authorization to proceed with some of these staffing changes in the near future? What you have in the following page is page twenty-three is just a letter from the EDC, once again reiterating their support for the staffing changes that they have recommended as part of the development task force. And finally, the last piece of the presentation here is item number twenty-four, which is what will happen if we're not able to make some of these staffing changes, specifically in the planning department. And I'd like to have Doug speak specifically to the reduction of services that he may have to impose to make up for the workload, as well as the lack of staff he presently has.
Yeah, what I, what I asked my staff to do is if, if we have to continue the same level of services with the workload we have from the private sector, we need to find some savings in what we do because we're just wearing people out. And we can't be successful if we're worn out every day. So I asked staff to take a look at things that they thought we could take out of our system, and we'd have to change ordinances and codes to do this, to reduce the workload on the planning side. That doesn't necessarily mean anything changes in Don's shop or Dave's shop because the permits are still going to go through, but the level of review would not be the same. Again, we've tried to maintain quality of service, quality of development, and quality of life, and we can't do everything because we've been adding programs without keeping up with the staff and the development activity. That's our, our report to you, and we appreciate your, your attention.
Additional comments?
I would just note that on this last page, reduction of service, we're not, it's not a threat, I'm not, services will not be reduced. This was just an outline to let you know that many of the people in our planning department are just getting burnout because of it. The request that will be coming to you at legislative committee at a regular council meeting is to do two things. One, help eliminate the burnout, make it much more business-friendly, and get the whole development services area of this city government where I believe city council wants it. So again, this last page on number twenty-four is just to give you an idea of what is causing our burnout. Thank you.
The direction you want to know is, do we move forward and fill these positions now, or does the council want to wait for the remainder of the study?
Correct. Would you like us to bring back a legislative, future legislative calendar, a resolution to allocate--
We will be, just because of, for agenda purposes, what we have on our agenda today, I would just tell council, I don't need an answer today. I will be bringing it to a future city council meeting. This is just for your information today. Thank you.
How long does it take to fill a position? If we gave you the nod, how many days before you advertise it, start the application, the review process, and then fill it?
Depending on the level of position, it could take upwards of sixty days.
Okay. Okay. Although not requested, I'll give you my input. The positions, from my standpoint, are justifiable. They make good sense. They, they expedite the process. They assist the developer, they generate the fees, they save us money, allow us to do more work. I have a comfort level, as presented tonight, to move forward as quickly as possible. The, the pending study can run concurrently, and if you, if you wanted to move this forward for action formally in, in a future date, I would not recommend waiting until the completion. If, in fact, it's comfort level with your, with your staff, Mr. Reddy, I would, I would be comfortable in bringing it forward so the council could start this action as quickly as possible. You had indicated, Doug, in your comments, the fourth quarter is your busiest quarter. You're already busting the doors open from last year. If we know it's going to keep going and you're going to need more services, I, I'm comfortable in bringing it forward for, for council action. Council, what's your thoughts?
I agree. My, my problem here is what's on your agenda is the design review process. It's not review of the whole planning department, and so this, this needs to get onto an agenda item that allows you to give that sort of direction.
I think we should put it on an agenda.
So we can formalize our agreement?
Yep.
Council, okay with putting it on an agenda for formal discussion?
Mm-hmm.
That's okay, isn't it?
That's great. Great direction.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, though?
Mr. Mills.
But we could talk about the thing that was on the agenda, right?
Yeah, sure. Design review. Yes, sir.
My comment on design review is, I think this is, this is what has, what, what, what I've certainly been looking for. I think Doug slipped a few things in there that I wasn't looking for, but, but I see them as, as being helpful. And I think the whole, the whole setup, the whole rearrangement of designing view is structured around expediting and getting proper review. And more importantly, not only, I mean, we can do what we can, what we're, what we're doing in ordinance here, but it will take a commitment from the planning commission in, to actually make it work. And we've talked about that. Planning commission, I'm sure knows what that, what that, what that commitment is. And I think also, as fast as we can move this along, the better off we will be in assisting the applicants, the, the developers to get their projects through quicker so they can get in the Don's. Get lying behind that one-hundred-and-fifty.
Yeah, there you go. The sixth version of this, if we wanted to make comments, do we just give it to you as we read it? You're going to bring it to planning commission in the next week or so?
If, if council members have any comments, you can pass them on to the city manager, call me, or hand them to me.
Okay.
We're going to start pushing this very hard--
Good.
--and get it on a hearing cycle and try to meet everybody's expectations because we want it done, too. It's been a long time coming.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor, all-- When, when the report comes to, to council, I would very much like to make sure pages seventeen and nineteen are included. Those are very much appreciated, very nice to see, and I can't talk about them because they're not on that agenda. But I can say page numbers.
Seventeen looks good. I don't have nineteen, anything? All right. Anything else, gentlemen? Good report. Very good report. I, I think this is probably my favorite piece right here, the one that showed the ad, the article about Palm Springs busting the record.
It's kind of nice when you get your opening piece from the newspaper.
We can carry this one forward.
We could be short.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's take a look at it. Come on, you're taking our line. All right, let's take a look real quick at the last item, which is the change in our starting times for meetings. Mr. Reddy?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this was brought back from a previous agenda, and what it is, it is a schedule that you had approved once, in theory, on the, the times for city council meeting, study sessions, and this is just a review. Council had asked us to bring it forward for you to revisit the issues. Thank you. We have, what we've passed out is what council approved previously and what the different scenarios are. You'd asked us to bring it forward, and that's what it is this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden.
I don't see doing this. We're six weeks out from an election, and if we set this, then it means the new council would have to abide by these new times, is that correct? Or, or then they'd have to change them again. It's just a lot of, I think, unnecessary changes within a very brief time that would confuse the community.
I would, I'd agree with Mr. Oden, but I don't see it as a waste of time. I see it as a very early topic of the discussion after the election.
After?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll agendize it for the first study session after the election. Thank you.
Maybe it can be an issue during the elections. Mr. Ellis-Bergen, what's your thoughts?
I look forward to not having to discuss it.
You could cast the fate of the future and then walk away. How's that? All right, there you go. All right, it looks to me as if it's ten-twenty-three. There's no further items on the agenda. We have completed tonight's workload. Thank you all very much. So you know further business before the council will stand adjourned. Thank you and good night.